Thank you. Let us pray. Heavenly Fathers, we come before you tonight to do the people's business. We first of all want to be mindful and be thankful for all the many blessings that we share and experience together in this community. Also, Lord, we're very thankful for all the people that we get to work with and live with here and all the many activities that go on around us. And we just ask, Lord, for wisdom for all those that take part in the meeting and for discernment and good decisions to be made on the part of all the people by this commission tonight. And Father, too, in closing, we want to be mindful also of all those in uniform services that protect us, both at home and abroad, but especially today, Lord, as our hearts are heavy, as we laid to rest one of their own, those from police protection over in Hall County, and just such a tragic incident over there, Lord. We just pray for peace for those close to them and their family, in their community there. And we just pray, Lord, we thank you for your protection, again, for all those that serve us here, and just ask for your blessings in this meeting tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(Inhales) Let us raise the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indefensible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll move on with our agenda here. Commissioner Levent, do you have any changes to the agenda this evening?
Yes, ma'am. My chair, I would like to see if the board will entertain getting a quick update from councillor where we are on any 5G status contracts with any of the carriers or suppliers, and add it as new business number two.
I have a motion to add item number two as 5G update from council. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second. All in favor, please, or everybody, please vote. You still work session, sorry about that. That motion does carry five to zero. Are there any other changes or additions from you, Commissioner Levent?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Cooper, did you have any changes this evening?
No, Madam Chair, I do not.
Thank you. Nothing from Commissioner Mills. Commissioner Brown, do you have any changes this evening?
Madam Chair, I have none, thank you.
You have none. Did you not have a postponement?
That was next week.
Oh, that was next week. Okay, thank you. Eric Johnson?
Madam Chair, I do not.
Thank you. Mr. Merritt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do not have anything to change.
Wow, this is a big special night, councillor.
Madam Chair, forgive me.
All right, here we go.
Yes. No, actually, Madam Chair, you had mentioned that perhaps Public Hearing 13 should be moved to August 1st, and I just wanted to check with you on that.
Yes, sir. Actually, and that is traveling along with another item. I'm going to turn to that page myself real quick. There are two items that were with respect to encompass...
Old business.
Yeah, I'm still flipping through all these pages. I believe it's old business number one. Both of those items are going to be postponed until August the 1st. That's my motion.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Please vote. And that motion carries with a vote of five to zero. If we're going to go ahead and do my other one, then I do have another one, which is old business number two. I do have a letter here from the applicant requesting a postponement on that item until August 1st as well, and that's my motion.
Second.
A motion and second. Please vote. And that motion carries five to zero. Sorry to interrupt you, councillor, but you got me on my own items, so I finished them.
No worries. Thank you very much.
Any other items from you?
Madam Chair, yes, I would. I'd like to see the board's indulgence on Public Hearing 9, which is the consideration of a resolution involving the moratorium in D4. I was going to see if the board would countenance adding a 9A, which would be a possible resolution implementing the new design standards immediately in districts four and five, and lifting the D4 moratorium altogether. And that will require a fourth, fifth vote to add this evening.
Would anyone like to offer that as a motion?
No move.
I'll give that a second. There's a motion and second. Please vote. And that will be the addition of item number, we'll call it 9A.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's all for me.
Thank you. Are there any other changes or additions, deletions from staff? Tom Brown or anyone? Nope? All righty then, is there a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
No move.
Second.
A motion and second. Please vote. And that motion passes with a vote of five to zero. We do have a presentation of a resolution this evening. I believe Commissioner Levent would like to make that presentation.
Keith Banky here. Please step forward, sir. Would you like to bring your wife? Can't do anything without her, that lovely wife of yours. If I'll step up to the podium. Thank you. This is a resolution by the Board of Commissioners of Forsyth County. Whereas Keith Banky was appointed as a Forsyth County citizen stakeholder on April 13th, 2017, to assist and facilitate citizens and community participation in the zoning and land use process. And whereas on July 25th, 2017, Keith Banky was appointed as a commissioned District 3 representative on the Forsyth County Board Planning Commission. Whereas Keith Banky diligently served on the Forsyth County Planning Commission until May 22nd, 2019. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Forsyth County, in recognition of the dedication, service, leadership, and performance of the duties incumbent upon him, he does hereby express to Keith Banky its esteemed appreciation and gratitude for his exemplary service on the Forsyth County Planning Commission. Be it further resolved that the resolution be presented to Keith Banky, and a copy of the resolution be entered into the official minutes of the Forsyth County, Georgia Board of Commissioners. It was my privilege. (Inhales) Thank you so much. (Inhales) You know, why don't you picture with us? Guess what? You get to get in a TSB. You're so gorgeous. Come on.[521.29][521.29](Laughter) (Inhales) (Applause) Anybody that wants to sign up to get involved in zoning is a very brave individual, and we always appreciate their service.
Thank you. At this time, Karen is going to read the rules of the meeting and going to announce our public comment speakers.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and members of the board. I'd like to take a moment to review the meeting procedures. We ask that you please silence all cell phones and electronic devices. Those who wish to speak during public comments should complete a public comment form, which is available just outside this room. Information regarding specific requirements when addressing the board is listed at the podium. Please state this information prior to speaking. All comments should be directed to the entire board and not to a particular commissioner. There are two public comment opportunities during the meeting for speakers to make a verbal presentation to the board, one now and one prior to old business. The number of speakers is limited to 10 now and 10 at the second portion. Speakers are selected on a first-come basis and will be heard in the order in which they signed up, with the exception that Forsyth County residents will be heard first, with non-county residents to follow, until the allotted time has expired. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Ma'am, we have none for this portion. If anyone would like to address the board, please come forward at this time. I see none.
Thank you, Karen. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes of the regular meeting and public hearings and executive session of June 20th, 2019?
Second.
A motion and second. Please vote. That motion carries five to zero. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes of the work session and executive session of June the 25th, 2019?
No move.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Please vote. Thank you. Again, that carries five to zero. Lastly, on these agenda items, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
No move.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Please vote. Again, that carries five to zero. As we enter into public hearings, Karen is going to again read another announcement regarding the requirement for all speakers to complete a public hearing form and to, in order to speak at these hearings. Karen?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. For the public hearings portion of the meeting, each side, those in opposition and those in support, are allotted 10 minutes to speak. Those who wish to speak should complete a public hearing form available just outside this room. Please fill out both sides and submit your form to the clerk when approaching the podium to speak. If there is more than one speaker for each side, the available time will be divided among the speakers, and we will provide a reminder when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining.
Thank you. Tom, are you going to introduce number one with the UDC modifications for southeast Forsyth? Or Vanessa?
Sure. Alex from TSW will be presenting the design standards. I do want to emphasize that the draft as presented shows the recently adopted residential countywide standards in green font with the standards specific to southeast Forsyth in blue.
Thank you for that clarification. Would you like to go ahead and make the presentation, then I'll open the comments.
Good evening. (Inhales) It's a little off-center. Is the board able to see it on their screen, I guess?
We see it.
Okay. So, you've seen me before, Alex White-Wasack, TSW, talking about the southeast Forsyth design standards, and largely, we, these are in support of the 2017 comprehensive plan that was adopted. Essentially, as part of that plan, it was identified that the county would like more of a sort of sense of place for the southeast Forsyth area, and TSW was hired to help create those standards. They're essentially built upon the countywide standards, so there's some similarity, obviously. Essentially, within the comp plan, as many of you are aware, there were 11 character areas that were established, and essentially, there's nodes within each of these where there's more intense development. The study area that was identified through the stakeholder group involved four of said areas, a portion of McFarland, a portion of South Georgia 400, Bee Creek, and Hall Creek and Dave's Creek in their entirety. So that's what that map on screen is right now. In terms of some of the research and outreach that led up to the standards, as I said, these were built off the countywide standards. There was that review of the comprehensive plan, review of some other similar jurisdictions, or in some cases, not totally similar, aspirational districts, let's say, Milton, Alpharetta, Cobb County, et cetera. We did have stakeholder interviews, and importantly, we actually met with the steering committee on this one. That's different from the countywide standards, in addition to looking at zoning conditions. And we had three different listening sessions and an open house in November last year. So, as with the countywide standards, there was a desire by the community to have sort of a higher standard, is a little bit slightly on the higher side than the countywide in general. But we'll kind of go through the nuts and bolts of these fairly quickly, since some of them are fairly similar. So, much like the countywide standards, there are two sets of standards, the sort of lot-oriented standards and the ones that are oriented more towards subdivisions. These are a little bit different, obviously, because it doesn't pertain to the entire county. The area that we mentioned, or I mentioned just now, is where these apply, and so these would supersede the existing countywide standards and any others, except overlays specified in Chapter 21, and that was just an administrative thing to make sure it was pretty clear-cut. Right now, there is, as far as application requirements, it's still in the draft that it's essentially identical to the countywide standards in that some of the review items that were addressed for the countywide having to do with elevations and site plans are required at building permit. When this went through the planning commission, however, they had, I'm sorry, yeah, it was the planning commission. The planning commission and the steering committee both had an interest in those being more stringent back to what they were before they were changed. I believe the argument was made that there's more time for review by citizens. Anyway, felt obliged to mention that to you. As far as lot standards are essentially the same, there's one small tweak for lot coverage for Res 4, essentially because that allows actually Res 4 to be built in a real way. Wall finishes, this is very similar, it's just a sort of slightly different way of regulating the foundation walls that we do in the countywide standards. Essentially, for anything that's 18 inches above grade, there's a list of allowable durable materials, brick, stone, cement, stucco, those sorts of things. And then, for the foundation walls or anything that's up to the first 18 inches, you have to use brick, stone, or cement stucco, and you couldn't use some of these other things. That's to address some of the comments that we heard about water tables. One other requirement for southeast Forsyth area is that when you have a change in materials, as shown in this diagram, where you've got siding on one and brick on another of these adjoining walls, essentially, that change has to happen in an inside corner, and that's mostly because if it happens at an outside corner, those joints are exposed and it doesn't look that good. As far as window coverage, this is very similar to countywide standard, however, walls that are facing the front have to have a minimum of 15% of the area, that front facade, and then it's 10% for the side. So that's elevated from what it was for the countywide standards. And then, there's some additional requirements that came out through the process of requiring when shutters are used, not that they're required, but when they're used, they have to be sized appropriately, meaning that they should match half the width, et cetera, look like operable shutters. The window depth, which is everyone's favorite topic, is actually, at the request of the steering committee, was brought back to one and a half inches, which is closer to the original standard that we had proposed for the countywide. And then, as we know, part of the reason, the reason those are there is to give some more depth to the facade, especially at those windows. Again, garage doors were addressed countywide. This is slightly different. Countywide allowed sort of either direction. This is basically saying that they have to be set back at least 10 feet from the face of the building, as shown in this particular example. These are slightly different than the countywide standards. These are not addressed. One thing that it did not mention necessarily, but there was a, there was an increased interest in making these sort of slightly more elevated than the countywide standards, holding these, this area and these sets of properties to a higher standard, which is why there's more of these standards. Any main entrance for a house would have to face the street and have a sidewalk that goes to that street, and then essentially, if your building is within 25 feet of that street, that you would have to provide a hedge or fence to provide some more privacy and sort of sense of separation between the public and the private there. There's some standards regarding accessory buildings, both in terms of the type of materials that are used, they need to be the same as those used in the main building, just to provide some consistency, and then that accessory building can exceed 50% of the primary building. We have some common area standards, can't, in order to count, it has to be no smaller than 8,000 square feet, similar to discussions we had with countywide standards. That's not to say you couldn't have it, it just wouldn't count towards that, that number in your planning metrics. We also had the similar language about overstore trees, and that was in the countywide standards, but had been removed later on in the process. Another item that was part of the countywide standard that the southeast Forsyth Steering Committee was interested in keeping had to do with the walking trails between cul-de-sacs of a certain size, trying to provide some connectivity. If your cul-de-sac is larger than 500 feet, essentially providing some connectivity to another cul-de-sac so that, you know, if Bobby wants to play with his friend down the street on the other cul-de-sac, he can just go through that path rather than going all the way around. As far as sidewalks, they're required on all new streets, and again, this is one thing that the committee wanted to retain, was sidewalks on both sides of the street for those. And I know that was, that was a discussion that we had, but we felt the need to sort of bring that before this body to discuss. Both sides if they serve more than 30 houses. One thing that's not addressed in countywide has to do with signage. Essentially, the signage has to be durable, especially what we're calling the sign supports. So in this case, you've got an actual boulder, or the appearance of a boulder, that is durable, it's brick, stone, or, it's not allowed to be wood, because there's some issues, as much as I like wood signs, and several of the committee members discuss this, there is a concern about maintenance over time. That's, that was, that was the reason it was ultimately removed. Obviously, there'll probably be some discussion about that. As far as the face of the material, it can be metal, wood, and synthetics that have the appearance of wood. I know that's very popular these days, as well as the more durable materials, brick and stone. And then, there was no, essentially, a prohibition against internal illumination that was pretty uniform. As far as lighting for the subdivision, that was required, that it's a consistent fixture, it's not, doesn't vary lot to lot or block to block, and then it must maintain a certain illumination level to avoid sort of bright and dark spots. When it came to landscaping, there was a request to basically make sure that no more than any, no more than 33% of the tree species could be one species to avoid, A, some monotony, and also any, if there was a disease or anything like that, it wouldn't wipe out everything. And then we put in, these are, I'm sure, going to come up for discussion, put in some maintenance requirements in terms of making sure that plant material is free of disease, that it's maintained, that items that are dead are replaced. That was, I know, something that garnered a lot of discussion in our groups, and that they're pruned appropriately. Retaining walls, another item I know we discussed at length. The steering committee was adamant essentially that we keep the language about the prohibition of Gabian walls, so that is revived in that discussion, I'm sure. And the street layout is slightly different in the sense that it's limited to 600 feet versus, I believe, 900 feet in the countywide standards. And I believe the last one essentially has to do with an additional buffer. So if you're not along the right-of-way or public space, you have to ride an extra five feet to get you to 30 feet around the entire property. The only thing that I wanted to add, that's not a slide, is obviously, these would be implemented on the same delay, once adopted, obviously, would, on the same delay as the countywide standards. And with that, I will defer to questions. That's all right.
Thank you. Commissioners, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public comments, or public hearing first, because that may generate some questions amongst ourselves. So is there a motion to open the public hearing?
No move.
Second.
A motion and second. Please vote. And our public hearing is now open with a vote of five to zero. If there's anyone who is here to speak in favor of making these changes, please come forward at this time. If there's anyone who is here to speak in opposition to these changes, please come forward.
Stephen Davis with the Great Atlanta Home Builder Association. Good to see all of you again. I'd just like to really quickly thank you guys very much. All have worked with us on trying to improve these standards to make sure that what is on paper actually works in the field. These particular ones for southeast Forsyth are extremely prescriptive, and it is our opinion that they could end up leading to homes that don't look as unique as they could, and end up as homes that look extremely similar, and I don't believe that's what the commission's going with. Being so prescriptive takes away the ability of the architects, the engineers, the home builders, to build homes that look unique and have the identity for those neighborhoods. So for that reason, we ask that you vote in opposition to this. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anyone else who's here to speak in opposition to these standards, please come forward.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Ethan Underwood with the firm of Miles Hands for Talent. I'm not completely in opposition to all of these standards. Now, the countywide standards, we spent a lot of time vetting those, and we think we came up with a very good product. I can specifically speak from the application process for both land disturbance permits and zoning applications. If you all would talk with your staff and ask them about what does it take to do a master plan district zoning application? By requiring building elevations and fencing requirements and open space characters, we're essentially changing every zoning in south Forsyth into a master plan district. I mean, you're asking for charrette books that are super thick, and you're just, I can tell you, there's so much more time and staff hours that are put onto that, it makes it very difficult. What I would submit to you, rather than requiring elevation drawings and plans just to even submit, your planning commissioners can ask for that, and they often do. Sometimes we get into a process and you say, you know what, this just, it makes sense and it goes through the process. Other times, they say, you know, I really need to see some elevations on this before I'm going to let it go. You all have the discretion to do that without putting it into the code, and I wish that you would make it, preserve that flexibility, rather than just mandate it to where it becomes so expensive and so difficult. Now, again, I'm kind of speaking against my interests. The harder y'all make it, it really forces people to hire zoning lawyers to go through the process. But requiring all of this materials upfront costs a lot of money, it costs a lot of time, and what it really does is it limits the sandbox of who can play in it. Because now, the mom and pops and the small folks who are representing themselves now, or maybe even the custom builder, who says, I don't know what I'm going to build yet. We're going to go develop lots, I don't know what it's going to look, I'm going to let my buyer tell me what it's going to do. The only folks who can now play in the sandbox are the national developers, who can come in with a book and say, here's what we're building on day one. We just think that your planning commissioners have the ability to ask for elevations if they want them, but if you put it in the code, you're now making it very, very inflexible for the small folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
Second.
You have a motion and second. Please vote. We're now closed with a vote of five to zero. Commissioners, I think we're going to have a little discussion on this this evening. I've heard some, some undercurrent that... heard some, some undercurrent that we may not be quite there yet, I'm not sure where the, I'm gonna have some questions of my own with respect to where the perceived conflicts are on this, but I'm gonna allow some comments or questions from the other board members first. Commissioner LaVine, did you have any comments on this?
Yeah, I lived this world for a little bit, so I made, I think, about five that I have questions about. They, you showed a picture of a, it looked like a slab home, in the first 18 inches, you were showing brick on that slab home as one of the criterias that has to be done, but you also said that you, there's gonna be allowed stone or stucco. I think you might wanna go look at the code, it may conflict what you're gonna do, I don't think you're allowed to do stucco with that foam board at a certain distance off the ground and allows termites in, and I believe that code was changed 15 to 20 years ago. So you gotta make sure you don't conflict with that code with the stucco, you may not be allowed to let the stucco in. Windows on the side, y'all might wanna really look at that, what did we do countywide, 3%? And this is gonna be more than three times that amount, it's just something to look at more carefully. The windows, I, that 1.5, I'm, it doesn't bother me one way or the other. I, I, that is a look that I once suggested, but they pushed back on the new windows that are being built. Question I have for the presenter. The garage setback, is that just on garages that face forward? Okay, then I'm good with that, or whatever that amount is, I'm not as concerned with that. Tree standards. I thought we released those out of the countywide because we were gonna allow that to be addressed in the actual tree ordinance, is that, am I remembering that correctly?
You are remembering that correctly, however, I do wanna remind you with respect to both the, the comments on the side windows and the, 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 the presentation that trees are still in this, is that the baseline county standards are meant to be just that, a baseline?
I understand.
And that each individual area of the county that wishes to create some sort of a special character area like this?
I understand that.
Uses those from, as a launching point from which they may enhance those standards.
Right, so you're thinking the tree standard may be greater than the, so we may adopt?
Correct, and, and that's correct, and so, when I, I'm gonna, like I said, I wanna have everybody else speak, I do have some questions of my own, but I don't wanna try to
And I have, I have just
Control this unnecessarily, but I wanna make sure there are no conflicts.
Yes, yes, that's what I'm, that's why I'm doing this, I wanna make sure we don't conflict ourselves out.
Do we know that the tree standards in every case are greater than what's in the countywide? Did we do it?
Alex, can you answer that question for Commissioner Brown? Is the, is the representation in this, in this set of standards for tree, for the tree coverage, is, does that exceed or does it not meet what we are currently proposing under the tree ordinance separately?
Looks like it exceeds.
I, I, I'll go ahead, the ordinance states, the draft states it would be in addition to tree ordinance requirements, so it's an additional tree for the draft standard.
Thank you for the clarification.
And it's not that much, it's, it's palatable.
Correct, correct, and that's what I'm trying to get at, is, you know, I, I think there's been this idea that there's some uneven balance between what's being done from one part of the county versus the other. When you set a baseline that is countywide, that is meant as a platform for the rest of the county to build on, as appropriate.
I understand, I understand, so I'm almost done, and then y'all can have the floor all you want. Tree plantings, and you were talking about lighting and keeping them under maintenance, is there anything in there, Alex, that you, you don't let trees be planted next to the light poles to where eventually they cover up the illumination of the light? And should there be?
Not explicitly.
Okay.
But, that's certainly open to that language.
All right, and my other thing is the elevation drawings way in advance, I, I have to agree, and I don't like to do, agree with it, it's only turning too often, but you may run off some of your custom builders, because they absolutely appeal more to the spec home buyer that wants it, their plan, they bring it their way, and you may not know that when you go to develop the community, they may show up six months or a year later with their 6,000, 8,000 square foot plan, and, and, and that would work better for the track home builder, but if you
Right, and I think that's the
You may squeeze out your custom builder.
That's an important distinction, though, because I think typically when we're looking at these larger developments, when we're looking at what we can, would consider a major subdivision, we're not looking at a major subdivision that's comprised of 10 different custom builders coming in there anymore, that, that was, that was 15, 20 years ago.
Well, that was my
And that's not the landscape we're dealing with today.
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Any other Commissioners?
I had a question on the, the house, Alex, that you showed with, requiring a fence and the shrubs, I know the shrubs are not an issue, but I wondered if you talked to water and sewer at all? I know that Tim gets all anxious when it comes to running sewer lines, and, and that's where the sewer lines come in, and what happens is that the county winds up paying the bill. I mean, it looks all good, but then when you have to start moving the sewer lines and replacing, and we tell people not to put that kind of thing in the county's right-of-way, and then we make that a requirement to go into the county's right-of-way, we sort of are shooting ourselves in the foot.
Well, this was intended to be outside of the county right-of-way. The, we weren't, we intentionally, we had, in, in discussions we had about street trees and sidewalks, we, we had some direct conversations about that, we hadn't explicitly talked about fences per se, mostly because that was envisioned in the sort of public, sorry, in the private property, not necessarily a public right-of-way.
Well, Tim, you make sure.
I, I would imagine that's something that during the permitting process, that they're going to encounter that, that if there's a, if there's an issue with that, it's not gonna be permitted, and that's
But it's, if we put it in here, that it has to be, and then we contradict ourselves later.
Well, and, and I think that there's, that you can subject that to, you know, whether it's permissible, and if they've already compensated for those types of allowances in, in, in the initial forming of this, that should not be an issue, but if, you know, if Tim has concerns or anyone has concerns that there's some, something that they see that conflicts, that does not sit right, then certainly we should address that.
In that particular picture, you know, things may have to get adjusted, the water line would probably be between the, the curb and the sidewalk, the, the power line would probably about where that row of shrubs is at, and then the fence, to put that in, the fence would have to come down, things like that, but we did have a recent discussion just trying to, any large tree, we ran into a situation where we had to cut through some roots, and they told us it could make the tree unstable and fall on the house, and so I think there should be a desire to maybe get those bigger trees further back from the right-of-way, because the power company, gas company, cable company, somebody in 20 years, by the time the tree gets big, will trench through there, and will be facing a situation with a tree that's unstable. So the smaller trees, you probably won't kill, so I think it's just some planting on the type of tree.
And I think that's important when we do the tree ordinance, that that gets conveyed correctly.
Right, and I think that's one of those things, too, though, that's gonna have to come from, from a, a builder having the proper skill and proper people putting in their landscaping, that those should be things that are part of their trade that are understood. You know, had I been an expert on that, certainly I'm not still today, I wouldn't have put a maple tree right up against my driveway, but builders do that because they want the, the instant impact, and so, you know, it's really kind of incumbent upon them to make sure that they're, making sure that they're putting things in the proper place, obviously, if we see a conflict, we need to call that out, but I, I would say, that's a beautiful picture of that home right there, but I don't typically see too many places with picket fences running across them, as, as spec homes in major subdivisions. It's lovely, but that's, that's not what we're typically gonna be coming up against, I think in the case of that particular fence, homes probably not gonna be sold that way, typically.
Molly inherited a neighborhood that's very similar, that the entire neighborhood's that way.
It's beautiful.
It's lovely, it really is, really lovely neighborhood. I do have one little question.
Yes, please, go ahead.
You hit upon it, Alex, and I think you've taken care of it, I just wanna make sure.
True.
On the window thing with the glass pane being one and a half inches from the adjacent wall, that does work with the manufactured windows, right? With the outside frame of the manufactured windows?
Yeah, it definitely
If you remember in the past, that was something that was a problem, because it would not
Just taking point.
It, it's the, the type of windows, so I will just upfront mention that most vinyl windows would not meet that standard. So there are other windows, manufactured windows that would meet that standard, aluminum-clad wood windows, you know, there's, there's other standards out there, but most, the way that most modern vinyl windows are made, they're essentially
Flat.
Flush with the front, so that, that is something to take into consideration.
Higher PVC windows will usually work within this.
It's an architectural detail that they're trying to accomplish with that, I think, and this is basically a double-hung.
I understand, I was just trying to make it, where it would work with what we're trying to achieve.
Right, right, what we're, what are we excluding in that?
Yeah.
Exactly.
So, Tom, what happens?
Thank you.
Makes sense. What happens when we have these design standards and, and a house is built, and then the homeowner decides they want vinyl windows because they don't like the maintenance that the Board of Commissioners has put in, and they don't like wood, and it has to be redone?
We've gone down this before, it doesn't, it doesn't, once the home buyer buys it, it's
So the homeowner will have the right?
Absolutely.
Even though the Board of Commissioners has determined that they shouldn't have vinyl windows, they can do what they want after they've paid this exorbitant price?
No, not as currently drafted.
So can you make a, can you make a comment as to how that would allow for that flexibility for a homeowner at a later time? Or can perhaps?
We'd have to add that language to say, you know, this, this window requirement applies to initial construction?
Right.
But not replacement.
Right, because I think that was kind of the, the guidance that we were using on all of these things was that this was not necessarily to impact remodels or people living within their own home sites, but really to address the incoming market that, of what we were, the new homes that were coming onto the market in the community, they're, they're built, being built to a certain standard level that we were expecting.
Yeah, well, we have, we have a section talking about what it applies to, Alex can walk you through that if you want, to go through that in additional detail. I know, maybe he can come, Alex, could you speak to that? I know with the countywide product, we have something similar where we're talking about, you know, if a home was destroyed and they had to replace part of it?
Right.
The, the standards would not apply to that, if, if the home had never in the first place been in compliance, if it was a home that existed today.
The, the way that it's currently written is that the standards are the standards, so there's no, there's no difference in application for existing homes versus new homes.
Because I would have an interest in allowing an individual homeowner to have that discretion at a later date, I think that what we're trying to capture here is that we're trying to maintain a certain level of standard product that's being brought to our county. If it's the homeowner's choice to make that, to make that change, I'm fine with that.
And you know, they come out with better product.
Well, right.
I mean, they come out with stuff that is more energy efficient, that's better than, you know, some type of siding that's much better, and we, we can see the future.
Well, in any case, um, yeah, any, and you have another question on windows?
Yeah, well.
This will, this, this would apply to a custom-built home, yes, because there's the lot standards and the subdivision standards, so as a lot standard, that would be included.
With what, seven or more as a major?
Pardon me?
Seven or more lots?
Yes, yes. Commissioner Brown, did you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, this for John, John Cannard. John, the three-foot sidewalk, and Alex, maybe, you know, down on the sidewalk, they're saying it has to be a, a different, a wider sidewalk for ADA compliance, is, what's the story on that?
Is that intended to be from the right-of-way to the house or within the right-of-way?
That's from the right-of-way to the house.
So that's on private property?
It's a, it's a minimum standard, essentially.
So within the county right-of-way, the minimum five foot?
Right.
To meet ADA requirements, but on private property?
So this is
We wouldn't regulate it.
This is private, okay.
That is correct.
Private property.
Okay. The landscape maintenance, does this requirement fall, who does that fall on the HOA or?
The way it's written holds each owner, occupant, or tenant
And who enforces it then?
Presumably, it would be the county.
So we're gonna have code enforcement going around checking if somebody has a, a tree that's not healthy, we're gonna
Well, that, on initial construction, it's gonna be similar to the countywide standards, there are gonna be zoning inspectors inspecting for all this as they sign off on the final inspection for the home.
Yeah.
Once the home's constructed, if someone had that sidewalk and, and ripped it out, we're not gonna be doing a maintenance inspection on that, but like many of our codes, it's gonna be a complaint-based follow-up, if someone complained about it, it would be, their code, code compliance or a zoning inspector, depending on the topic, would visit the site, determine if there was a violation. And again, from, from the comments we've already had tonight, it sounds like some of these, we don't wanna focus on, we wanna focus on initial construction only?
Right.
And not on renovations.
Right. And that's tipping into one of the notes that I had made to myself, too, which was really, I had to talk to either Tom or Kenny on this, that I saw that ongoing maintenance of lights and plants could be problematic for us, particularly when we're talking about on private property or a lot, so I really don't know how, how to deal with that other than focusing on initial construction and, you know, basically the CO.
I could not, I mean, I, I couldn't agree more, I mean, you know, with every regulation, there's a, what, what level of governmental involvement do we wanna have, not only with the initial development?
Right.
But with ongoing maintenance, this county, some jurisdictions touch on this, but, you know, do we wanna be a countywide HOA, and, and that's
Right, and, and to me, it, I understand the concern with that, nobody wants to live next to a degraded property that has all, you know, all of those kind of issues, but it seems like that's the type of thing that we would more likely want to make sure is covered under, if a neighbor is going to have covenants?
A covenant.
That, that's gonna put the, the enforcement burden on the community to, to take over that responsibility.
Agreed.
So, or not.
I do think one issue we have dealt with, especially when it pertains to zoning conditions that relay proper maintenance of buffer areas and so forth, has been the height of grass. We have had code compliance tell us that when they inform the HOA or even a property owner that it needs to be a reasonable length, then there ensues a further discussion as to what qualifies as reasonable. I will say there is a maintenance provision in here that has a height maximum for grass, and the reason why that was included was the difficulty when there are code compliance complaints of, of being able to inform and tell either an HOA or a property owner exactly how high the grass can grow before mandatory maintenance is required. We can certainly strike it, but I did want to explain the rationale of why it's in there.
Yeah, and that actually starts getting into a different area, aside from, I think, what we're looking at right now through the lens of, of residential design standards, and really starts to get into the nuisance property type things that we deal with sometimes, and there are gonna be cases outside, that may be residential, maybe commercial, maybe within or without a subdivision, that is overgrown, that we are going to make some sort of a code enforcement visit upon and order them to get rid of excess brush grass, overgrown buildings and of that nature, so I, what's your, what are your thoughts on that, Ken?
Well, that, that, it's sort of like, it, it depends on what is the, what is the evil we're attempting to address, is it in fact yards and conditions on property that are such that they are beginning to have a detrimental effect on adjoining property owners, such that there are harboring rats and mosquitoes, and the health department calls them vectors, and things of that nature that can spread infectious disease, that's one issue. Or are we simply getting into the lawn and garden business and wanting to make sure that these, these neighborhoods look, look, look nice? That's a different issue, that's not illegitimate.
Right.
Aesthetics is a perfectly legitimate thing for a county government to be involved in, but you've gotta make the policy decision of where you want that line to stop, that that is more of a private issue in this board's consideration.
And again, I think that, that distinction's important when you're talking about whether it's mosquitoes and rats, and, and it's creating some sort of a public health hazard versus whether it's another one of those items that along with ongoing plant and light maintenance and, and those types of fixtures within the community that goes under the HOA?
Correct.
In the covenants.
That's right.
As much as I appreciate a beautiful lawn?
Uh, we all, we all do.
It's really, you know, we, we, we can't be knocking on every door for overgrown grass.
Yes, ma'am.
I guess the one, the one lingering question I had, there have been some, some, some comments earlier today that I, that I picked up on, that there might be some idea that there's some conflict between what we've recently gone through with these countywide standards versus this, and so my question to that is, are the, what are those supposed conflicts that are still out there, and are they really an element of that they are just completely unaligned, or are we looking at things where a, a standard that is proposed under the Southeast is proposed under the southeast does not quite meet, or in all cases, do they exceed? Because there's a hierarchy there. And so if we're talking about a baseline of standards, if there's conflicts, it may not be a true conflict, if it is simply just an expansion upon a basic standard. So are there conflicts that you see or that staff sees within what has been captured here for Southeast Forsyth with what we've gone through with the countywide product?
I don't believe so. Essentially, when we crafted these, we crafted them to be, as you said, a step up essentially from that baseline standard. There are some minor differences. The, the foundation, the way the foundations are, are regulated obviously is a difference. I don't know if you would necessarily say that's a conflict.
Not a conflict, just a, just a variation.
Yeah. And it, I mean, I, if there is a specific issue, I could probably look into it.
Yeah. I, I just, like I said, I had heard it in just, in just those bland terms.
Right.
And so that's why I wanted to ask the question as to what exactly those conflicts were, because there's a difference between a complete conflict and something that is simply a different level.
Right. Agreed.
I have one more question.
Right ahead.
On the steering committee, and I, I didn't go to any of these meetings.
Right.
Um, how, what was the makeup? Who was a part of this committee? And how, what was the attendance like at the meetings?
The attendance was pretty good. I mean, we had five members, I believe.
Six members.
And we usually had at least five in attendance over the three or four times that we met. And they were very engaged and, and very interested in the process and very passionate about the process as well. So I, I think they, I, I can't speak to how they were appointed. It was, this is the...
No, I don't care about that. But there were fi, only, there were five people that were...
There were, yes. There were, there were six people on, on the, on the committee. And most of the time, we had five people there.
And there wasn't bigger?
Well, there...
Community meetings?
The folks that were, the folks that were asked to be, yeah, there were. And the folks that were asked to be part of the steering committee were geographically chosen to represent large areas of the community. So it, it does reflect it. You know, much like our planning commissioner, our board here, each one of our voices represents a larger number of voices.
I was just wondering if we were questioned about, because it represents a big.
It is.
A lot, a, a big area. And I mean, you know, especially when we start telling, you know, limiting what people can do with their houses.
Right.
I want to know that when I start getting complaints, that who was representing that area, that they were making the decisions and who?
Yeah.
Who made those decisions for that large group? I want to be able to say, oh, well, you had five people representing, you know, 40,000 or?
We have five people representing 240,000 every day.
Well, I want to be able to know who?
Right.
Where they came from.
There were, there were public meetings and there were minutes that are, that are documented. I'm sure if they're not posted online, that Vanessa or Tom could get two copies of those minutes if you wish.
Yes, they are online under the meetings page of our website.
Right. Well, Commissioner Brown and I are the two that are most impacted, maybe the only two that are impacted with what's, what's going on here. And we had had an earlier discussion today as to whether or not we felt we were ready to move forward on this. My basic questions were with respect to these perceived conflicts. And I, I would say that I do still have some outstanding issues personally with respect to drawing that line for kind of an initial quality and release of new product onto the market versus somebody's own private personal rights to, 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 you know, make in different changes to their own personal property. I, I think with respect to all of the other issues, I think I'm there. But I don't, I, I think what you and I had discussed, Dennis, and I'll let you speak to this as well, was that I think if, if we are going to hit the pause on this, it would probably be very valuable for us to reach back with those stakeholders again one more time, meet with them and just be, you know, be on the path to make sure that this is representing what was envisioned.
Yes.
What was, what was sponsored through this process.
Yep.
And what it reflects the process.
That's right.
So Dennis, I might let you, you know, make any comments you like or, or do you wish for this?
No, I, I agree. And there's some, a couple of areas I wanted to look at and then talk with some of the, the stakeholders also, because I just haven't had a chance to do that. And so I would like to postpone it for a brief time, not, not for a long time, maybe till August 1st. That would give us enough time to, to meet with who we need to meet with and just get it firm in our minds. And then, and then would we have to have another public hearing, Ken, if we, if we change some of the language?
It's, it's one of those situations where it, it's going to depend. It depends how substantive the changes are. If they are generally consistent or less restrictive, the answer is no. If they are considerably more restrictive, it's likely that we should provide the public one more opportunity.
Ken, just out of a, an abundance of caution.
Yes, ma'am.
Your favorite term.
It is.
Um, would it make sense for us then to make the postpone on that decision and set it for another public hearing for August 1st at this time and, and just allow that to occur rather than to bring it back as old business?
It's always better to go ahead and, and have that planned and not need it as opposed to need, need it and not have it planned.
Okay.
Yes.
Dennis?
So I'd like to, I'd like to move that we postpone the modifications to Southeast Forsyth Design Standards until August 1st with, with public hearing.
And advertise a public hearing on that date.
Thank you.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. And that motion carries with a vote of five to zero. All right.
Could I, could I make a small point? I actually may not be able to present on August 1st.
That's fine. I, I think what, at this point, what we're looking to do is to resolve any small items that may be lingering with the committee itself. And if there's a, a need to re-present this, which I don't think that there will be, we'll certainly have staff reach out and make that happen some other way.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, item number two. Tom Brown.
Yes, public hearing two regarding the request for an amendment of zoning conditions on zoning application 3022, Eastbrook Properties LLC by Brian Thomas. This also includes variances to the Unified Development Code. First variance is to reduce the rear yard setback 20 feet to allow the rear yard setback to be five feet instead of the required 25. And the second is to reduce the impervious surface setback 25 feet to allow the impervious surface setback to be 50 instead of the requirement of 75 feet.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So move. Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. We're now open with a vote of five to zero. Good evening. If you could introduce yourself and...
Good evening. Uh, Brian Thomas. I'm a resident here in Forsyth County, living in Coming. Uh, looking to get a variance for the impervious setback on our property from 75 feet to 50 feet. Um, we are looking to add a couple of things in our, in our backyard. So we're looking to improve the overall safety and quality of our rear yard space and make it fenced in, usable area for our family instead of the safety hazard it is now. We have a very steep hill in the, in the back of our yard. We're also looking to put a pool in the back of the yard as well. Um, we have sent certified letters to the entire neighborhood. We have also had the sign posted in front of our property for the allotted amount of time requested. Also have letters here from both of my direct neighbors that I can bring up to you guys if you'd like to review these.
Um, normally you'll have copies for everybody. If you just want to hand them to the clerk, that will, that will be fine. Um, all right. If, if you want, I'm going to go ahead and call for any other voices of support, then opposition, then we may have some questions for you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone else who's here to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Thank you.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. And we're closed. All right. I'm going to direct this to Commissioner Cooper. It's your district and this is your constituent.
Hey, how you doing tonight?
Doing well. How are you?
I'm good. Um, on this, you're asking to reduce the rear setback from 25 feet to five feet.
All right. So the impervious setback is currently 75 feet. Um, we have a creek running...
You want to reduce that to 50 though, right?
Yes. Yeah, to reduce it to 50.
But this is saying, I mean, this is, I'm just reading what I've got here that was presented before me, that it was to reduce the rear setback from 25, which is, you know, the UDC requirement, 25 feet setback.
Okay.
To five feet. So what do you have behind you that, that is going to be getting up so close to? Do you have?
Uh, so we have a creek running behind our property, which is why I understand that the 75 impervious setback is there.
How close would this take you to the creek once that, if that were to happen?
Uh, it would, it would put us approximately 50 feet from the creek.
50 feet from the creek. Um, and you said you have got letters from your neighbors? Which people in the neighborhood? Those are?
Correct. So both of my...
Next door, on either side of you?
Yes. Next door, on either side of me. Correct.
Okay. All right.
And we've also sent certified letters of all the plans to our entire neighborhood.
Uh, because all you're asking for is a variance. You're not asking, you're not requesting that the UDC be changed, just a variance to the UDC. If I could have some input from you on this, Tom.
Yes, a variance request.
On this, because I'm, I'm somewhat concerned about this setback from 25 to 5 feet. Could you talk to me some about that?
Well, I, I do see, you know, that the application and advertisement had two variances. One was reduce the rear yard setback by 20 feet to go from 25 down to 5.
Exactly. And then the impervious...
The other was the stream buffer based reduction of impervious surface setback from 75 to 50.
Mm-hmm. So it's two separate things?
Yes.
And like I said, I'm a little concerned about this going from 25 to 5 feet. Maybe I'm not processing this correctly in my head, but that's, that's quite a reduction.
Yes.
That's what you got from me? Yes?
From what, from what I'm seeing here, it looks like in no case do they, do they come into that 50-foot buffer?
They don't.
Stream buffer?
We do not.
Okay. And you will sit five si, five feet outside of that?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. And then on the other side of the stream, what is there on the other side of that stream?
Uh, it's actually HOA-owned property. And it's actually wooded space.
Okay.
So it'll never be developed.
Okay. So it's not going to be?
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Very good. All right. Um, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. And they do, there is a, there is a notific, there is a notation, at least in my notes, and it's probably in yours as well, that, that the lot will be staked and inspected prior to, to breaking in that pool.
Right.
So you're not going to be coming back later asking for more.
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. Thanks. Appreciate that. Thank you. Okay. Any other, any of the other commissioners have any comment on it? Okay. Then I move to support the amendment to zoning condition, ZA 3022, Eastbrook Properties LLC by Brian Thomas, and the variance to UDC Section 11.2B and UDC Section 1811.2B, parcel 032608, to reduce the rear setback from 25 feet to 5 feet and to reduce the impervious setback from 75 to 50 feet.
Second. We have a motion, a second, all, please vote. And the motion carries with a vote of five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy your pool.
Thank you.
All right. Number three, Tom Brown.
AZ 190015. This is in Commission District Number Two. It's a public hearing for Kumar S. Turin regarding the amendment of condition number eight placed on zoning application 1794. The applicant's also requesting a variance. The variance is to reduce the rear yard setback 15 feet to allow the rear yard setback to be 10 instead of 25 feet.
'Tis the season.
Yes.
All right. Uh, is there a motion to open the public hearing? So move. Motion, a second, please vote. And we're open. Please introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Kumar Chiru. Uh, we are, our lot comes on a slight angle and the current setback is 25 feet. We are asking to have it removed, or moved to 10 feet because the way the, the lot comes on an angle, it would push the pool to be, uh, too close to the house for safety and everything with our, with little kids around. So we were asking to have it 10 because the left side of the pool would still be within the 25 feet from the distance from the end of the line. It's just the, uh, the part that comes across. So, and behind our house is a brush area. So we wouldn't impact our neighbors. I've already submitted the, uh, letter from, I only have one neighbor, so I've already submitted that, uh, application for his approval.
Thank you. Hold with us here. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing? So move. Motion, a second, please vote. And we're closed. All righty then. Commissioner Brown, this is your district.
Yeah, how you doing?
How are you?
Laurel Springs, right?
Yes.
So your HOA is for it?
Yes, sir.
All the neighbors are happy?
I've submitted the approvals from the HOA as well.
Yeah, I don't have any more questions. I'm ready to make a motion.
Please go ahead.
I'd like to move, we approve the amendment of zoning conditions, ZA 1794, by Kumar S. Chiru, for purposes of building the pool and the spa as, uh, is displayed on the screen.
Second. We have a motion, a second, please vote. And that passes five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Number four, Mr. Brown.
AZ 190017 in Commission District Number Two. It's a public hearing for Ashley Barton regarding the amendment of condition number H placed on zoning application 2339. The applicant's also requesting a variance to reduce the exterior setback 25 feet to allow a exterior setback to be 25 feet instead of the required 50.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing? So move. Motion, a second, please vote. And we're open with a vote of five to zero. Good evening.
Good evening. No PowerPoints.
You're really worried about this, aren't you? Seeing how these pools are going.
Yep. So my name's Jeff Girkcheff. I am the homeowner with my wife Heather, my son Jeffrey actually back in, in the audience with us. We're looking to have a, a pool installed in our rear yard. Currently have a 50-foot setback, looking to come within 25 feet of the setback. We've submitted, I believe, the plans already as to the pool, the privacy issues, which there will be none. There's actually pools with both neighbors on each side of us. We back up to undeveloped land, a large parcel of land that has a home and a barn of some sort back there, but undeveloped otherwise. We've gotten letters from our neighbors that they have no issues with, with us proceeding forward. So looking to have a, a pool and a spa and enjoy your backyard.
Thank you. If you'll just hang with us for a second. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor of this application? And is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing? So move. And we, please vote. And we are closed with a vote of five to zero. Commissioner Brown, lots of fun things happening over in District Two.
Yeah, everybody gets, gets a pool, right? So, uh, all the neighbors are happy. I see the two letters.
Yes, sir.
Everybody, you haven't heard any complaints?
No, sir.
So, um, well, enjoy the pool, I guess, if we, assuming we vote there. I'd like to move that we approve the request for zoning amendment conditions on ZA 2339 by Ashley Barton for purposes of pool and spa as shown on the screen.
Second. We have a motion, a second, please vote. And that motion carries with a vote of five to zero.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving right along, we are at public hearing number five.
AZ 190002 located in Commission District Number Three. This is a public hearing for Jeffrey H. Hancock regarding the deletion of conditions number one, two, and three on CP 020031. The applicant's also requesting variances. The first is to reduce the zoning setback 36 feet to allow the zoning setbacks to be 14 feet. The second is to reduce the zoning buffer 26 feet to allow the zoning buffer to be 14 feet. The third is reduce the front setback 40 feet to allow the front setback to be zero. And the fourth and final variance request, reduce the front landscape strip 10 feet to allow the landscape strip to be zero feet.
Thank you. I'll pause a moment as you're scrolling through those, those changes. I will do that as well. Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So move. Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. And we are open. And I think we're at the end of it now. Uh, please introduce yourselves.
I am Linda Poston. My husband Will Poston.
We're, we're owners of WALNJ and Mattressafe who occupies premises that we're asking for the variance.
Okay, thank you. Um, if you, if you want to wait, you can answer questions for Commissioner Levente or I can call up other, uh, is there anyone else who's here to speak on behalf of your application?
No, it's just the two of us.
Okay. Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition to this application? Is there a motion to close this public hearing? So move. Motion, a second, please vote. And we're closed. Commissioner Levente, this is yours.
If you all will please give the Board of Com-
If you all will please give the Board of Commissioners history of this property, when you came across it, when you purchased it, and what condition it was when you purchased it, and how you got here today.
Okay. In 19, in 2006, December of 2006, we had started a business in 2004, and we needed space, you know, for our business. So I found this property, and it was originally a bait shop, a bait place where they grew minnows and things like that, and there was a shutter shop there that was construction there. So it was up for sale, and, and we were able to purchase it so that we could put our business there. We've been occupying these premises since 2006, having passed the building and fire inspections each year, and until the present. These buildings have been on the property for many years before we occupied them, and have been operated by other manufacturing commercial businesses. We are requesting variances to the UDC, from the UDC, our existing setbacks, to comply with the setbacks that are now in force for new properties, as per the applications and plot plans and drawings submitted.
Is that okay?
And have you all done any additional grading or parking lot increases, or you're just trying to work within what you purchased?
Just when, when we have, you know, done some drainage problems, things that we needed to fix, and we had someone out to look at it.
But all the grading and all the setbacks were there when you purchased it?
Everything was there.
So essentially, we're bringing them into compliance.
We're bringing them into compliance, and they've been getting permits to operate there all this time, the way it has been, so.
Thank you.
We have come up with a, I think Ken drew a memorandum of agreement of right-of-way entry, just in case some of the plaintiffs had to go in the right-of-way, and that was going to be based on the site alignment. John Cunard, I sent that over to you, have you taken a look at it?
I believe we had it at our stations earlier somewhere.
Yes, we've taken a look at it, and we're satisfied with what's proposed, if you're satisfied with the proposed landscape.
And when you scrolled this, I didn't see exhibit A or B. Do we have that to show? And Ken, do I need to show the memorandum of agreement and right-of-way entry, or we just have that in the county record?
Right, that's, we don't have to show that, that's going to be a contract between the county and the property owners, assuming the board does in fact ratify it, but there's no need to show it, Commissioner, thank you.
And it appears that they've already signed their side, we'll sign ours if this gets approved?
Once the board approves it, the chairman will sign it.
Very good, thank you, sir. Okay, I think I'm ready. If you all have any other questions, anybody have any questions?
Please go ahead.
Make a motion to approve the CUP 020031 on the original, and the AZ 190002 on the original ZA number, if I'm going to find my original ZA number. I don't think it's listed in there. Anyways, the variance is shown to table 12.2, and exhibit A and B as shown.
Second. Question for, for Ken, do you want him to include in that motion the, the approval of the MOU, or are we going to do that as a separate motion?
I was going to ask for that as a separate item.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second, please vote.
Okay.
That motion carries with a vote of 5 to 0. Commissioner Levin, you have another item?
Yep, I have a motion that we accept and approve the memorandum of agreement and right-of-way entry, in the event they have to put the additional landscape package into our right-of-way, and for the chairman to sign.
You have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. And that motion passes with a vote of 5 to 0.
Madam Chair, as a point of order, and just to make sure that there's no concern with respect to the record, Commissioner Levin, as part of the zoning approval, would you mind making a motion that states that the zoning approval included the conditions as displayed?
Yes, sir. So move. Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote.
Uh-oh, we have to clear the board, ma'am.
Oh, yep, clear it. All righty, there we go.
Thank you, that's valid.
And that third motion does pass with a vote of 5 to 0 as well.
Now y'all can sleep again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Item number six, Heather Ryan.
Before due, our board directed changes related to commercial uses, that of course I would love to walk you through. And these begin with a definition change. References to car wash services will be removed from automobile service establishment minor and be assigned a new and separate definition. This will read, "A business establishment engaged in the washing and/or waxing of any vehicle, including but not limited to cars, trucks, motorcycles, boats, personal watercraft, all-terrain vehicles, et cetera, either by the patron, by others, by automated machinery, or by some combination thereof." Moving into the commercial uses chapter, automobile service establishment major will now require a cup in HB. Car wash will be added to the table, it will require a cup in HB and CBD, be permitted in HC, and be prohibited in all other zonings. This follows the same permissions as its former governing use, but incorporates the requested changes to a cup requirement for HB and CBD. This next item is simply a housekeeping item, there's no content changing here, it's a move only, a few uses have been thrown out of order over time, so we're just shifting them back to their appropriate location. Going forward, miscellaneous service establishment will change to a cup in HB, and open-air business, also a cup in HB. Again, moving down, we have another housekeeping item, so there's no content changed, but simply a move for residents for caretaker or night watchman. And here, we're going to remove a service station altogether, it's a bit of an outdated use, we currently don't have a definition for that, and it's, it's not used, so we've determined that its removal would be appropriate. And then finally, for commercial uses, vehicle rental establishment will now require a cup in HB and CBD. And then moving into industrial districts, car wash will be added and follow its former governing use there, automobile service establishment minor. And then again, service stations will be removed from that table as well. So then the rest of the changes, as we scroll through, they're simply references to the car wash and service station use following suit, so again, service stations will be removed, and then an adjustment to reference car wash versus an alternative term. And it should also be noted that at the June 25 public hearing, the Planning Commission voted to move this forward with the addition of a change to automobile service establishment minor, and that's a cup in CBD also. And that's all I have.
Thank you, lot to digest there. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. And we're open with a vote of 5 to 0. Is there anyone who is here to speak in favor of these changes to the UDC? Is there anyone who is here to speak in opposition to these changes? Is there a motion to close this public hearing?
I move second.
Motion, a second, please vote.
Where is Kurt?
And we are closed with a vote of 5 to 0.
I don't know, I'm kind of worried.
All right, Commissioners, any questions for staff on these changes, which look largely to be either commission-directed or largely housekeeping items? Are there any specific questions to any impacts or changes that this may affect? There's not. Would anyone like to offer a motion on this item?
Move, we approve the modifications to the UDC regarding commercial uses as briefed.
Second.
Before we move on to that, can we clarify the one recommendation from the Planning Commission that wasn't in the document? Commissioner Brown, let.
Do you want that included? It was not presented, but was discussed.
Yes, with that additional.
With that, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you.
My second is the same.
Includes that as well. Thank you for that clarification.
Thanks, Tom.
We have a motion, a second, everybody please vote. And that motion carries with a vote of 5 to 0. All righty, number seven.
Madam Chair, Board members. Item number seven is a first public hearing with respect to proposed modifications to the Forsyth County Park and Recreation Ordinance. This has been obviously discussed by the Board of Commissioners previously, and this is to actually shore up and make more restrictive. Those regulations reflect, with respect to park and recreation regarding smoking and vaping, and also alternative nicotine products. So hopefully you have a resolution in your agenda packet, and then you ought to see an exhibit A. If you look at that exhibit A, you might see a section 5424B that says, "For purposes of this section," which this is new language, "the term vaping or vape shall have the same meaning as in section 57," that's the county's vaping ordinance. But we also included and enhanced that definition to include vape juice that does not include nicotine, which is actually becoming very popular. So that's new, and again, that's just a definition of terms. C deals with alternative nicotine products, hookahs, the sort of non-traditional nicotine ingestion devices, that we also have a lot of concerns with, that are basically alternative ways to smoke, to say it candidly. So let's go to D, which contains some new language. This is where we actually begin the new regulation part of the language. It is a violation of this article, meaning the Park and Recreation Code, for any person to vape, which is new, and this is a defined term, smoke, chew, dip, or otherwise use or consume in any manner tobacco, tobacco products, to include alternative nicotine products in any form, in any enclosed buildings, in any park or recreation facility owned, leased, or managed by Forsyth County. Therefore, those things cannot be done indoors. But this is probably the most significant change, is E. It shall also be a violation of this article for any person to smoke or vape within the outdoor boundaries of any park owned, leased, or managed by Forsyth County. Traditionally, we have had dedicated smoking areas in our county parks, and this would put an end to that, both with respect to smoking, but also with respect to vaping. It would not be a violation to possess those items, but it would be a violation to use them. Madam Chair, this is a first public hearing, you cannot adopt this evening.
Thank you for that. All right, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I move.
A motion, a second, please vote. And we are open with a vote of 4 to 0, with Todd Levin temporarily stepping out. Is there anyone who is here to speak in favor of this change?
I, Gary Cooper, resident of Forsyth County. I'm here tonight in my official capacity as District Four member and Chair of the Forsyth County Parks and Recreation Board, to discuss this ordinance or possible ordinance. Last year, over several meetings, our board discussed this same possibility. Most of that discussion was a complete ban on all tobacco products. Two things ended our discussion, and we decided to table it later in the year. Those two things were enforcement of the policy, and the fact that some of our athletic clubs, booster clubs at each park, has some reservations about enforcing that policy on their members. Later this year, earlier this year actually, back in our June meeting, we decided to bring this topic up again, knowing that this public hearing was going to be happening over the summer, and we wanted to stress our recommendation to the board, of course, it was by a 5-0 vote of our board, to make this policy applicable to all tobacco products, not just smoking and vaping. The reason for that is, if the way technology has worked in the vaping world, moving forward, you're going to get to where it's going to be more smokeless than it is smoking and vaping. So we would like for you guys to consider, ladies and guys, to consider the full ordinance being a tobacco-free policy across all of our parks. One thing that our board would like to stress, that we kept going back and forth on, is the enforcement of this policy. We don't think it is right that our staff at the parks, those that work the parks day and night, to be the ones enforcing this. It needs to have some law enforcement backing behind it. And right now, we only have four park rangers for our entire county park and rec system. So I would stress that we take that into account when we're doing this new ordinance. We're in favor of it, we made that recommendation to you, but we make it where it's tobacco-free across the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor of this?
Hi, I'm Victoria Ray, I'm the coordinator with the Forsyth County Drug Awareness Council. And I'm here definitely to speak in favor of this. Just because of what, in my world, and the way, the things that I've learned as I work, I've been working, we know about youth's heavy reliance on informal sources of information based on their opinions about drug use, so what they see other people doing, what they see their peers doing, what they hear, you know, and the music, and so, as we create these, these places for them to grow up, and to be able to, to have these safe environments, I really think that it's important for us to have these places here for them, because that's primarily who's using our parks. Also, just as a person who works with a lot of young people who are in recovery, there's a lot of, when it's, when you're talking about vaping, there's, it's not just nicotine anymore, there's a lot of other stuff in there, so by prohibiting that, you're going to save yourself a whole lot of trouble up down the road. Also, you're going to create places for them to be able to go and to feel safe, like they can really experience life again, and get out, and, and go to, you know, go, go play sports with their friends, and they're not surrounded by all the stuff that, that drugged them into the pits of addiction. So I'm definitely in, in favor of this, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor of this change? Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition? You can turn the form in later, but make sure that you do, please. Thank you.
I will, thank you, I appreciate it.
And you're speaking in opposition, just be clear.
Yes, opposition. So my name is Melissa Klink, and I live in Forsyth County, and at 2035 Mountain Road in Coming. I oppose that proposal, because I think that adults are able to make decisions for themselves, and I also think it's a very bad idea to use police to enforce this. I don't think that that's what we need police to do. So that's really all I have to say about that. I think that smoking in your car should still be allowed on parks, in parks property. So that's all I wanted to add.
Okay, thank you. Just please make sure you turn the form into the clerk, thanks. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in opposition to this? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move second.
Motion, a second, please vote. We are now closed. Commissioners, we're not adopting this tonight, but I'm sure we may want to have some discussion.
Yeah, so I'm one of the guests brought this forward, and then we also worked on this way back, I think in 2012. I know Ms. Mills brought up some concerns at one time about whether or not chewing tobacco should be, attitudes are not, and we kind of walked away from it, but with their recommendation, I think we should add it, make it tobacco-free. I do have one question for Counselor. If they're still inside their car, are you able to tell them they can't have a cigarette in the car?
That is still, that would still be within the physical boundaries of the park and recreation property, so that would still be a violation, yes.
I think, that I, I don't know, I guess if you're still in your car, the smoke's going to be coming out the window still, so. I would like to direct, I guess, Counselor to add this for a complete tobacco-free.
So Commissioner Levin, you're talking about basically including the verbiage of smo, smoking, chewing, dipping, or otherwise consuming tobacco, not only being prohibited in the interior spaces of park property, but in the exterior boundaries as well.
If that's what park and rec recommendation is, that is my, that would be my motion.
I would ask for board direction on that.
I'd like for Gary to come back, I'd like to ask about park and rec.
Yeah, and I have one question for Counselor too. You know, in, in trying to move towards being more specific in capturing all tobacco items by moving that way, it seems it kind of moves it away from this idea that vape could be something that's a non-nicotine product. So I think we're going to have to be very careful in how we craft that, if, if that's the intention, is to, to encompass all of those things, or if it's not, so, just as a, an item. Go ahead, Ms. Mills, you had a question.
Well, when we were discussing the, the tobacco, the chewing part of it, you know, it's not a secondhand.
Right.
Thing, and we were talking about the enforcement, and how difficult it would be to, to enforce the chewing of tobacco.
We understand that. I forget who made the comment, I don't think it's in our notes, but the pop, the comment was made that it I don't think it's in our notes, but the comment was made that eventually whoever's chewing smokeless tobacco has to spit. So there is that.
I mean, I don't know how many of you go watch men's league softball games,
Yep.
but I'm telling you, 80% are
I would say closer to 100.
Or have the tobacco in their mouth.
Yeah.
I mean
Which was the example
And some of the umpires, too.
So hang on for a second.
The other thing
So that makes it okay? How?
I'm not saying it makes it okay, but who's going to be there to enforce it?
But
Enforcement is always going to be the issue.
On everything in the world. So the bottom line is they're spitting on these fields that these kids then go and play on also. How do we allow that?
The other thing that I would like to add about the chewing tobacco, it's not just the adult softball players that we were worried about. It's the coaches in youth rec sports that are out in the field doing the smokeless tobacco, chewing tobacco on the field with fashionable six, seven, eight, nine, 10-year-old kids on the field with them.
I agree.
So that was really where our heart was when it came to complete tobacco, was worrying about the impression that it would give to youth.
I don't disagree with that at all. I just worry, I mean, and it might not matter to us, but will we wind up not having a men's adult league? Will they all go to Dawson County and play?
You run that risk, and the risk that we heard from our booster clubs, because we did talk to them, was that you run the risk of not having volunteer coaches, or enough volunteer coaches, because they can't do one little act while they're in the process of coaching youth athletics. The other thing that, with the enforcement aspect of it, is it's not just the chewless tobacco, it's the chewing tobacco that you're going to have a problem enforcing the smoking. Several times this spring, along in parks on our end of the county commissioner, I've noticed in, said a few things to spectators, smoking cigars, smoking vapes, smoking cigarettes, and they just ignore it and keep going. And staff is very reluctant to even approach them.
And I think that's part of what this empowers the people that are participatory in the league, is that everyone is under the same understanding that there's a policy. Whether or not there is a law enforcement officer or a park ranger on hand, they have the basis to ask that person to leave. And if the person does not comply, then at that point, they may want to seek some other type of enforcement if they want to go that direction. So I understand, you know, having the policy with the understanding that enforcement is always going, you know, we can't staff a park to look for people smoking. I mean, we just can't.
Right.
But with the understanding that if there is such a policy, it does empower the people who are participating in that league to somewhat self-manage that, ask those people politely to comply, and then escalate as necessary.
And that was why we tabled it, too, was we went back to our clubs and asked them to police their members, if they could, that, hey, we know it's not illegal to do that at this time, but please police your members as volunteers, that they're leaving a lasting impression on youth, and not to do that.
Well, could we get the coaches to sign, you know, make it have something that, you know, our parks are smoke-free?
We're inundating them with enough paperwork. That was a concern of ours, was giving one more thing for them to sign.
And that kind of was another line that I was thinking, in terms of rather than, is it better to make that restriction at the property level, or is it better to make that a part of the programming? That the programming would require for youth sport involvement, that it's a tobacco-free? I think you can look at it either way.
I just think the messaging needs to be consistent.
We can certainly
That it is a tobacco-free park, it's tobacco-free, you know, coaching, you know, that you don't, you know, if you can't do without, then you
The old belt and suspenders can.
It's always better to have both belt and suspenders, no question.
It's almost like you're doing maybe some peer pressure, getting a little bit of peer pressure
Yeah.
for behavior. And that has actually worked as far as cigarette smoking. A lot of people have given it up because of the social ramifications and the peer pressure on it.
And in fairness, in our parks, they do go to the parking lot getting their cars and smoke. There's very less smoking now than there were just a few years ago at the fields.
It's just the chewing tobacco, you can't
Yeah.
Right.
That's the one I'm worried about.
Exactly, but nonetheless. But make the peer pressure on that, it's fine.
You have to bring up one.
Ms. Bryant?
I think baseball has went to, what, bubble gum or something? They have
Some fire scenes, mostly.
Yeah, so that rots your teeth. And, I mean, where do we, you know, it's America still. I mean, where do we draw the line?
Well, at some point, we're putting impressions on our children, and these parks, although designed for families, the families involve a lot of children. And then at what point do you expose them to things maybe they shouldn't be exposed to? Are we still in the 1960s, we're blowing smoke in our kid's face, or our neighbor's kid's face next to us? How's that acceptable?
In the back on it, I don't, I guess I
It's them spitting on the ground, Mr. Brown. Some cities don't even allow spitting. You get a citation because of the germs that come out of your mouth.
That was one of those old-timey laws.
And then while they're spitting all over the field and all over the course, and your child goes to slide right through it. I mean, how's that, I mean, that's just gross.
But I mean, if they're going down the sidewalk, they're going to see, they're going to see the same thing. Do you put them in a, you just lock them up and not let them out in the public to shield them from?
I don't know. I just think certain things belong in certain areas, and this is a family, these are family parks.
Well, we're not adopting this tonight. Is there any further discussion for this evening, or we want to wait until this comes back to us in, I guess, August first?
You're going to need to put it in for the next public hearing if we want to make this full tobacco and vaping.
Correct. So we'll give Ken some direction, and I think move on to the next item.
Ken, you need a vote or not, or is it just direction?
I would prefer, given that's a fairly significant change
Of course.
that the board go ahead, and if there's an interest, to make a motion to add basically the chew, dip, tobacco-free language to both the exterior spaces as well.
Would you agree that if we go ahead and do that at this time, bring it up at the next public hearing, if it's not the desire to move forward with that, it can be stricken?
And it could be stricken without another public hearing.
Correct.
Yes.
All right, so moved.
Second. There's a motion, a second, please vote.
Thank you, board members.
That motion carries with a vote of five to zero. Ken, you've got your merchant orders on that.
One last thing. If we were to adopt this, we could put signage in place at all the parks.
We could, and should you adopt the ordinance, I'm sure we can take it back to the Park and Rec Board and have further discussion on enforcement or a discussion with our staff on any of those items.
It might be we could even talk to the Drug Council about signage opportunity or something with them.
All right. Thank you, Gary.
Yep.
Thank you, everyone. Moving on to number eight, Ken, this is you again.
Madam Chair, board members, this is modifications to the Forsyth County Door-to-Door Solicitation Ordinance. This is, I believe, in the nature of the third public hearing, so you can most assuredly adopt this evening. It's gone through a little bit of changes as we have sort of gotten comfortable with the First Amendment implications of this, answered questions from stakeholders, try to get everybody comfortable with what we are trying to do, and importantly, what we're not trying to do. So you ought to have a resolution as before in your book. You ought to see an Exhibit A, and then you will see, hopefully, a definition of the term solicitor or canvasser. That has been in our code for years. We have expanded somewhat the definition to include individuals that solicit orders or appointments, which is something that we heard some concerns by citizens with respect to solicitation of appointments. And so we have made that repeatedly within the definition, and also, it's the solicitation not only of goods or wares, but services. So now we're capturing both appointments and services in our definition. We also have a definition of handbill, which really is not used that much, except in one section in the back, handbill, leaflets, documentation. That has a lot of First Amendment protection, so we're very hands-off with respect to that, and for good reason. But that's the first page. Then if you flip to the third page, you'll see that we can have some language that said, "No solicitor canvasser," and of course, if you're a solicitor canvasser, that means you're registered, "shall enter a home without the express invitation of the occupant or owner. If a no soliciting sign is posted, no solicitation shall occur." Again, we try to put an emphasis on the posting requirements to give folks that have individuals coming up to their home some relief, if they just don't want to have to fool with them at all. And then finally, at the very last page, you'll see, this was sort of a late addition, "If a no soliciting sign is posted, no handbills shall be left on the property." As a private property owner, I would have the right upon posting of that to not have that information put on my property if I choose not to receive it. Irrespective of whether an individual is a solicitor or canvasser, any person who distributes handbills on property containing a no soliciting sign shall be in violation of this ordinance and subject to citation. Just to repeat what we had discussed the last time, this ordinance, and particularly the, and exclusively, the solicitor or canvasser component is focused on commercial soliciting and canvassing. We had some questions about that, and it is focused on the transactional, the commercial sort of solicitation and canvassing. Madam Chair, if the Board of Commissioners is comfortable with this this evening, you may adopt.
I'd like to ask a question if I may, Ken.
I've got an open public hearing. Oh, you want a clarification?
Yeah.
Go right ahead.
Does this also include, you know, how people can take business cards, solicitation for their business, and tape it to the outside of the mailbox? So I don't know if this includes that on these properties, if there's a sign of no soliciting. Does that include that as well?
Guess if it's taped to your mailbox.
Yeah.
It's got to be posted. Right.
Yeah, it wouldn't, if it was posted, if it is posted, that would technically, under the literal language, be a problem. I would suspect that would be a terribly difficult thing to enforce if they're just left on the mailbox.
Because then they've got to go to your door and come back to your mailbox.
But I think the real thrust of it was information left at the, on the porch, left in the door, the hangers left on the door, et cetera. And everybody knows about that now, because everybody has the technology that shows people approaching their door. On the mailbox, technically, that would be a piece of printed literature, and if it's posted, no soliciting or no, you know, putting it on the mailbox would technically be a violation, but I think that would be a tough sell to enforce it.
Okay, thank you.
I agree. Is there a motion to open this public?
And
If there's any further clarification, Mr. Frampton?
By local ordinance, it's actually a federal law. It's a postlaw.
The mailbox.
Anything on the mailbox. Anything that doesn't have a stamp on it, on it, on in, or attached to a mailbox?
Ever.
So we tell people that call into the sheriff's office, we give the number to the postal inspector on the county's directory. It's actually for a business, it's a $10,000 fine, and for an individual, it's a $5,000.
Ooh, I'm going to put a camera on my mailbox.
I could tell you a story about the postal inspector calling me. Park captain hanging my flyers on everybody's mailbox. So they will call you, they will enforce it. So if it wouldn't be an ordinance thing, we would direct them in the postal inspector general.
Excellent.
Ooh, okay, thanks.
They actually have their own law enforcement people, and they will find you, put you in jail.
Well, and since the presumptive purpose of putting the piece of material there is to let you know someone was here and their phone number and address, I suspect that tracking them down is not terribly difficult.
Exactly. Okay.
They don't care if you're a cop.
Is there a motion to open this public hearing?
No move.
Motion, a second, please vote. And we're open with a vote of five to zero. If there's anyone who is here to speak in favor of this, please come forward at this time. If there is anyone who is here in opposition to this ordinance, please come forward. You can hand your papers over. Great.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Steve Smith, and I am here in my capacity as a second vice chair of the Forsyth County Democratic Party. I believe, mine is not necessarily in opposition as much as it is a question to clarify, which I believe Ken clarified for me anyway, I just wanted to get up here and have it on the record, that this amendment would not in any way, you know, impede our ability to political canvass, which obviously is protected speech.
Right, and we'll address that when we come out of public hearing, but I think you'll appreciate the answer.
Okay.
Is there any other questions or comments you have at this time?
Not for me, thank you.
No, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition?
Hi, Melissa Klink again, 205 Mountain Road, Coming, Georgia, and I'm here to speak out against it. I think I want to refer back to what Mr. Levente said last time you guys met, and said that it was beyond the purview of county commissioners to do so, also, everything that the city attorney spoke to as far as it being protected speech. So I just wanted that on record that I oppose.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
A motion, a second, please vote, and we are closed. Ken, I think you could respond to the concerns that were voiced. We've had that question come up at a previous
It's been a consistent theme of individuals concerned that we are trying to impair, for instance, political speech, canvassing of neighborhoods. We're not. Even the language with respect to handbills, doesn't mean that a candidate or a candidate's representative couldn't go up to a front door. Whether that will be well-received by the individual living there is another matter altogether, but our ordinance, from a regulatory perspective, is aimed at commercial transactions and those sorts of interactions, and again, it's just a registration requirement. And then there's that follow-up that indicates that if there is a no solicitation sign posted, that individuals should not leave material at that property, and that would be considered a violation. But again, we're not talking about attempting to impede the First Amendment rights of individuals that want to engage in political and religious speech.
And there was a huge, there was a lot of attention paid to both of those two types of speech in particular when we first brought this up
With good reason.
Many, many, many weeks ago, because those are protected forms of speech, and we certainly all recognize that.
And those do not have to register.
They do not. The registration only pertains to commercial, individuals engaged in a commercial transaction.
Right. And, you know, if someone's got a no soliciting sign, it's just good manners, don't solicit. I mean, really. In any case, Commissioners, do y'all have any questions or comments on this?
I would like to make a comment. I had gotten, what prompted this was I had gotten calls from constituents that do not want someone coming to their door. And these constituents are retired, they stay home, they say it makes them very nervous for someone to come knocking at the door when they're not expecting it or ringing their doorbell. And even one person said that if it happens again, I'm going to shoot somebody. So I'm just saying that it's something that there are people that don't want this, that don't want it in their yard, they don't want it at the door, and if they put up a no soliciting sign and you continue to go up there regardless what your reason is, there may be some people that are not receptive to it. So I'm just giving you the feedback of what I had gotten from constituents.
And again, Ken alluded to this earlier, which is, you know, we live in a very aware society now as far as people having the technology to notice that people are in and around their homes, and that has brought with it the ability for people to see that there are people moving about their property, perhaps when they are or are not home. And with that, some people, I know that there have been some instances, I've seen myself on social media in the areas within both, not just Facebook, but also on the neighborhood sites, that, you know, it's alarming to see somebody approach your home when you're not home, particularly if you have cameras at the rear of your home and you see them going around to the back. And so I think the idea that we have a policy that addresses that is what is another large, you know, moving piece in this for us, was to give some people some security and some idea that there is an actual policy that, you know, if you don't want to be disturbed, you have a right and are entitled to have that. So what is the pleasure of the board? Anyone like to offer a motion on this item? We are able to adopt this, so I will offer one, and I would like to make a motion that we adopt the proposed amendment, Ordinance 99, or Article Number Four, Chapter 22, with the Forsyth County Code of Ordinances to establish additional regulations regarding door-to-door solicitation, to provide relevant definitions, establish regulations regarding distribution of flyers, leaflets, and other printed materials, and to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes as presented and discussed. We have a motion, a second, please all vote. And that motion carries with a vote of five to zero. Number nine.
Madam Chair, board members, item number nine is a public hearing with respect to a resolution that is in your agenda book that will extend an existing moratorium and terminate another moratorium. And let me explain for a while now, candidly, since April of 2017, we have had in place a moratorium in District Four that would prohibit land disturbance permits with respect to zonings that had been granted between the years of 2000 and 2012. That has been for the promulgation of certain architectural design standards. Those design standards were, in fact, adopted but not made effective on June 6th of 2019. You may also recall, sort of as a prophylactic measure to make sure that there was nothing going to slip through, we also adopted an additional moratorium to ensure that there was no was no lapse. And so we basically have two moratoriums that in some respects overlap with respect to that D4 moratorium. Well, to the extent we're going to extend via a public hearing that D4 moratorium to go to December 6th, and we're going to terminate that short-term moratorium, I know that's a lot of moratorium lingo, but the bottom line is, after this public hearing, should you choose to, you can adopt a new, as an extension, the existing moratorium that has been placed, in place literally, since April of 2017, that would take the D4 moratorium all the way to June 6th of 2019 where those architectural and design standards become effective. And upon them becoming effective, this moratorium would expire. So that is what is in front of you right now. Now, you all have added a 9A as well. And Madam Chair, I might recommend that for purposes of this discussion, we might want to go ahead and discuss 9A now as opposed to waiting, because I don't know that we want to take action on 9 until 9A has at least been discussed.
I completely agree with that. Is there a motion to open this public hearing?
I'm a second.
A motion is second, please vote. And we're open with a vote of five to zero. Is there anyone who is here to speak in favor of the action we are considering? Is there anyone who is here to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm a second.
A motion is second, please vote. And we're closed. Commissioner Mills, this is primarily, well, it's impacting your district and has been for two years.
It is, and people, there's just a whole bunch going on with this. There have been people that, I mean, when this started, nobody thought it would be going on this long. I definitely didn't. And it's held a lot of people up for a long time, but there's other things. I mean, just today, I had a meeting with a group that came in to show me their house designs that were for a development that was approved in 2004, but they came in to reduce the number of lots in 2017, say, 2016. So it removed them from being a part of this old stuff. So they can go forward as soon as they could come in, in the midst of this gap that Tom and them have asked for us, that they won't be ready. So we can take this away, and if we don't make these effective for District Four tonight or in the near future, they could come in just like Starlight did in the two years that it's taken us to get this done, and they came in and got permits for everything in the development, and really, the main subdivision that caused us to move forward and do all this for District Four, came in and got permits for everything and defeated the whole purpose, a big part of the purpose, because they outsmarted everybody here. And so, I mean, I think that while Tom's staff was right that they needed to get ready for the new what's occurring, I don't think that really we have thought about, or maybe Tom's thought about it, but I think where we're going to have the rush is going to be in all the permits that are going to come in between now and December for everybody that doesn't want to go by these new design standards. I think that we're going to see an incredible rush for people that have, are wanting to not. Now, I think we could argue that the things this board's done, you know, with the 58 per conditions, you know, that maybe these new design standards don't do that much. But I've got a lot of old zonings that did have some tweaks done to them that still have a lot of bad conditions, that if I don't get these new design standards put on them, I can promise you, hundreds of lots are going to come in between now and December that are going to, I mean, they're going, it will be sad that they don't get the new design standards put on them. That's why I'm wanting to move ahead. I talked to Tom about it today, and Sharon came up to the meeting today with Ashton Woods, and they, Tom, I don't want to speak for you, but they were saying it would be good to have maybe a soft landing where they could take on maybe a few and not have every bit of it at one time in December.
I agree. Getting a small sample of what we've got to come will give us a chance to work out some of the bugs in the system, so to say.
And that's why, that way we can take off this moratorium that's been going on for two years and be able to move forward with it.
Ken, do you have any other comments on that?
Will.
Because I know we talked about some of the other, you know, some of the unintended consequences sometimes when we do these things, whether or not it would create some sort of a vacuum where people would maybe look to do speculative things in other areas out of fear, which we have that occur at times, and I had expressed that concern personally with this. I don't have a whole lot of activity in my district, but I do border that, and so I had that specific concern.
That's right. Yeah, I've taken a look at it, and as I have discussed with one of you, or maybe two of you, I do think that from the standpoint of sort of a soft start to those architectural standards, I believe that can be justified. It can be justified in D4 simply because of the length of the moratorium. There has been really a fairly significant, you know, moratorium for the better part of two years, and I think that perhaps D4 is entitled to a little bit of relief. I don't know that it would be the ground swell that it might be, for instance, in a D2, but it's still going to be a lot, or it could be, it could be some. D5 doesn't have quite the development pressures on new development. It may have some infill coming, but may not have the new pressures. And so both of those would probably be fairly reasonable dress rehearsals for the full rollout come December 6th. So that is a legitimate justification in my mind for opening it up in those two districts. And that's what the resolution that I handed out to you does. That resolution acknowledges the existing moratoriums in D4. It acknowledges that there has been a delay with respect to the December, the June 6th enactment in order to give planning time to rev up staff, become self-educated on the new rules, train their people, all of those are necessary before a significant rollout of a new code. But then it finds that there may be a rational and good faith basis to authorize and declare that those new standards become immediately effective and forcible and deemed inactive in Commission Districts Four and Five, but not Districts One, Two, and Three. And again, the purpose would be to allow this sort of limited ramp-up in those two districts. And it justifies why, for the very reasons the chairman mentioned, the D4 commission mentioned, and that I'm mentioning. And basically, if you were to adopt that resolution this evening, it would make these new standards immediately effective. And what I mean immediately, I mean tomorrow. In D4 and D5, it would terminate the moratorium in District Four and otherwise declare that the new standards are not effective in Districts One, Two, or Three. Not yet, not until December 6th. So, you know, Madam Chair, we could take that action this evening. You know, the action that we sort of advertised was to extend the moratorium in D4, but I know that, I know particularly the D4 commissioner has significant concerns about what that means with respects to some developments. So if we do this this evening, Madam Chair, I might want to redo it on the 23rd, in other words, do it tonight and then redo it on the 23rd, which would be a work session. Do we have a regular meeting on the 18th? We do, do we not? I might want to do it on the 18th.
Yes, we do. Yeah, we're a little out of sync because of the holiday. We do have a regular meeting next week.
So I might want to redo it on the 18th, but...
23rd is going to be our next work session.
Right. So the 18th, our next regular meeting. So I think I would want to do it twice.
Okay.
But we could, and I have prepared that resolution for that purpose.
With respect to doing it twice, is that just an exclamation point at this point? Because what, as you've stated it, it would be immediately effective tomorrow. That is just a reinforcement?
It would be. It would be. I just would like the benefit of it being published on the published agenda.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Anyone else on the board have any questions about what's been proposed? Would anyone like to, and how would you like that, how would you like the motion phrased, if that's what our decision wants to do?
If that's what we're going to go, if we're going to go that direction, then I would want the board to approve the resolution that has been circulated by the county attorney this evening, that is that at your station that I have discussed with you.
So moved. Second. And then I want to clarify with Tom, what you, would you just share with the audience the email you sent with me today about phases or the way you deem the design standards in relation to phases?
Yes. As we talked earlier today on the phone about future phases, and I sent what was close to a cut and paste from the ordinance to you, and this is the ordinance that was adopted by the board but doesn't go into place until December. My answer was, it was only two sentences, I'll read it. "Future phases of existing major subdivisions and platted lots within existing major subdivisions for which houses have not been permitted must comply with the lot standards." And those are the things like siding, buffers, windows, and similar topics. "They are, however exempt from the subdivision standards."
Right.
Things like Gabyan walls, street layout, exterior buffers, and similar items. That was the answer I sent you earlier today. And on your vote, I do, since I'm on the mic, I want to take advantage and just remind you, service, I feel like we'll be able to pull this off, but there's going to be some examples where the service is a little delayed. You know, I haven't a day to pull this off. It really wasn't until today that I started hearing about two districts being involved in this. I heard about it like a week or so ago, and it was only one district. It's going to take us a little time to ramp up. We can do it prior to December for sure, but some of our normal seven-day and nine-day turnarounds initially, we're not going to hit those exactly. It's going to take some time.
I actually think it, this might slow some, slow some of this down. I think you might have had a lot more permitting coming here.
Overall volume, I think it could, yes. Overall volume.
All right.
Trying to get my staff trained and the forms in place to apply this new work on short notices, it's going to take a little time.
Thank you. We do have an active motion and a second. Please vote. And that motion carries with a vote of five to zero. Dance in the Streets up in D4.
Madam Chair, and can we just direct that this item will be placed on the July 18th agenda?
I was actually going to mention that as a separate item.
A motion.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, please vote. And that will reappear on our agenda on the 18th. And that brings us to number 10.
Madam Chair, item number 10, Ms. S. Wine from my office is going to handle the presentation on that.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. So I think you will all remember that we previously revised the third-party inspection, I think it was earlier this year or late last year, to add some progressive penalties to distinguish between the technicians who are completing inspections under the supervision of an approved third-party inspector, basically to bifurcate that and so provide better accountability in different contexts. This revision is a bit more substantial. The state act that governs third-party inspections was recently updated and tweaked, I guess, and so we took the opportunity to go through our ordinance and fine-tune a lot of things and also expand it. So what you'll see, we've, the state act also contemplates in addition to third-party inspections, third-party plan reviews. So we've added a whole procedure that pretty much mirrors the third-party inspection program for third-party plan reviews. So there's an application process, qualifications, discipline, should there be any discrepancies or issues that staff identifies for third-party plan reviews. And we've also added some relevant definitions, renamed the program basically, and added some procedural changes in compliance with the state act so that what our staff are doing, what the third-party inspectors and third-party plans reviewers are doing are consistent with the state act and are incorporated there. After going through it a little bit more, we have come up with a couple of additional tweaks that we would like to make, and I'd like to get Charles' authorization for that as well tonight. This is the first public hearing, so you wouldn't be adopting anything. But in going through the inspection certifications, just making some tweaks to make it easier, getting rid of the seal, so it has to be signed by a third-party inspector, we'd ask to get rid of the seal, things like that, changing, removing a definition that's totally irrelevant, it doesn't even appear in there, a letter of intent doesn't appear in there at all anymore. The main thing would have to do with insurance and renewals. So at this point, we're requiring renewals by third-party inspectors on an annual basis, but that's a lot of overhead for the planning department to have to process, and there's really no reason for it. So we'd actually like to strike the renewal program so that the third-party inspectors don't have to come in annually, the planning department doesn't have to review it annually, but basically updating insurance would be all that would be required. And it gives staff the ability to request insurance certifications as necessary, that would be one change I'd ask. The other main change that I would ask for you to allow us to make is to change the timeline for when third-party inspections are submitted. Prior to us changing the ordinance for this public hearing, it was seven days from when the inspection was completed was what we had in the ordinance. We actually reduced it down for two days from when the inspection is completed, that the certification and everything has to be submitted to the department. But after talking with staff a little bit more, I think they're more comfortable with the required turnaround that they have for the inspectors to actually submit it after one business day. So that would be the only other substantive change other than the housekeeping issues that I'd mentioned previously.
All right, thank you. Counselor, do you think it's necessary for us to run through those red lines on the screen before I open the public hearing?
I do not, Commissioner, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I'm a second.
A motion is second, please vote. And that passes four to zero with Commissioner Cooper temporarily stepping out. We are now open. Is there anyone who is here to speak in favor of these changes? Is there anyone who is here to speak in opposition to them? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm a second.
A motion is second, please vote. And again, we're now closed with a vote of four to zero. Is there any commentary from Mr. Brown, your staff, anyone over there that is relevant to this that we should consider?
Well, this is primarily driven by changes that happened at the state.
State level.
But we already had in the works some related changes where, both with the verification of trees and the verification of street address posting, proper street address posting for residential projects, where we were going to be come forward anyways and ask to make those changes to get them into the ordinance. This product takes both those efforts together, combines them, brings you those changes we needed to get the third-party inspectors to look at trees and addressing, and it also incorporates what came down from the state.
Okay. So we're not doing the annual renewals at this point, but you're making sure that somebody always has active insurance on file. Are there any other types of certifications, trainings that those individuals must maintain that we should be checking to make sure that they are still licensed or capable to be doing the work that they're performing?
So the technicians, one of the requirements for the technician that works under the registered engineer or architect is an ICC certification, and we do track that to make sure that they are keeping that up to date. They don't fall at the same timeframe, depends on when they achieve that certification, but we do track that. And with the new software that we talked about the other day, we'll actually have some automated alerts in our system to let us know when those are about to expire, same with the insurance.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I had one from a year ago when we were talking about this. Under the code about suspension of technicians and third-party inspectors, we had talked about item E1E falsifying reports. I just feel real strongly that if we have somebody that's caught falsifying a report, they're not suspended, but they're revoked for a period of, I don't know, at least a year. Just automatically with one offense, and I think that's a different category than...
And I agree, because I think, Ken, you know, when you look at other things that, you know, legally, you know, presenting false information to a government entity.
Yeah.
I mean, that's really what we're talking about here. So I think that Commissioner Brown's correct in that.
He is. He is. I think that stands out as a different category.
It is.
I'd like to see if you could modify that to, I'd say an automatic revocation.
Are we gonna do the same to our county employees?
What?
If we have our own inspector that doesn't do their, our report right.
Well, if they're falsifying information, I think...
That's grounds for termination.
Yes.
There are other repercussions and pathways to that as well.
We've had that happen, have we not?
Well, we've had our inspectors overlook things in the field. That's not the same as filling out an inspection report, and our inspectors actually won't be filling out third-party inspection reports.
This is limited to the third-party stuff.
I'm just saying we should judge by the same rules.
Don't disagree, but this is limited in scope.
So if I may, if you look past the charts of the progressive violations down to number four, it actually provides that if a third-party inspector or technician is found to have violated section H1E, which is the falsification of reports, that the progressive actions and suspensions can be in the discretion of the county bypassed with the immediate suspension or disqualification imposed. So do you have that in there?
And of course, we always have the right to make a recommendation to other regulatory and prosecutorial agencies. We've done that before, and we know how to do it.
We do have the discretion to move forward.
Where is that again, I'm sorry?
So, I'm just gonna point up here, so you have the chart for the technician and the chart for the third-party inspectors down at the bottom on number four. I think that was a change we actually made earlier this year when we changed all of the penalties.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from the board? We're not adopting this tonight. If you'd like to reserve those for the next public hearing, we'll move on then. Do you need me to have this advertised for another public hearing?
It will all, automatically be advertised.
Thank you very much, so no action on that item this evening. Number 11.
Madam Chair, Ms. Siewan will make this presentation as well.
All right, thanks. So these are directly the results of a work session and direction that y'all gave to us after seeing some issues in the alcohol ordinance for economic development purposes for the most part. So we have specifically removed any language relating to a lease being tied to alcohol sales as it pertains to consumption on the premises and package sales where it's not distilled spirits by the package. Under state law, they still have to provide their lease, and they can't pay their rent based on grocery receipts from sales of alcohol. But the others, there's no state law on that, and so we've removed that, which will ease a burden for county staff and for, give flexibility to developers as well. We've also added a definition of a micro-distillery for consistency with the UDC, and there is a fencing requirement or a screening requirement that's typically included in the ordinance. It's in a couple of places, saying that if there's going to be alcohol consumption outside, that it has to be screened from public view, or if it's not, there's a specific fencing requirement. And we've removed those so as to provide flexibility when it's in developments like in Halcyon or the Collection or something like that where it might qualify for consumption outside, those to-go cups that y'all approved just a couple months ago. We also added a couple of sections on economic development having to do with the zoning districts in which you can seek an alcohol license so that the board has the discretion should you think you want to allow someone to seek an alcohol license in a business district or a zoning district that otherwise wouldn't qualify under the ordinance. And we also removed language that requires a licensee to open a business within six months of getting their alcohol license. It's something that staff has to track, and we're just removing that requirement.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, please vote. If there's anyone who's in favor of these changes, please come forward at this time. If there's anyone who would like to speak in opposition, please come forward. Is there a motion to close our public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, please vote. And we're closed. Commissioners, we're not adopting this tonight, but you may have some questions. Anyone? Anyone? I think, all right. If there's nothing that staff would like to add to that, I think we'll go ahead and move along. Again, that will reappear on a future agenda. And we'll go on to number 12, Mr. Bruin.
Thank you. Madam Chairman, tonight we come to the second of three required public hearings that enables the board to levy the property tax rates, the millage rates, if you will. The third hearing will be next week on the 18th, evening of the 18th, at a time certain of 6:00 p.m. with the board. After that hearing enabled to levy the millage rates after 6:30 at that meeting, and as such tonight, there's no action required by the board, just make a brief nine-slide presentation and give the public time for input.
Thank you.
If I may, then on the first slide, we have just a description of the three areas of the millage rates that are levied by the board and combined can come up with the total county millage rate. We list a variety of the services. The MNO rate is what goes into the general fund. There's a number of services there that are funded in part by the property tax, and a few of those that the public will see and recognize here are such as the sheriff's office services, ambulance service, parks and recreation and libraries, and a number of other services that the public may use at various times in different ways. We did want to show at least the general fund total proposed budget as it stands right now, just over $149.4 million. What I wanted to point out is, as I said, in part, the property tax has helped to fund this. The amount of property tax that goes in the general fund is just under 40% of this total $149 million amount. And by contrast, the sales tax and title of the law tax also generates about another 32% of this total $149 million, along with other revenues such as charges for service, fines, and licenses and so on. Just a few things to note as to how the millage rate, property taxes work. We start with the total assessed value, the fair market value, as I think the sheriffs' office calls it. In this example, we have showing a $250,000 amount. Of that amount, though, 40% then is considered for the tax bills and assessments as taxable. So in this case, if the assessed valuation was $250,000, the 40% would be $100,000 before any exemptions, and so each dollar would generate, each dollar of millage would generate $1 per thousand of tax. In this case, each millage dollar would generate $100 of tax. If there's the homestead exemption, for example, it's starting $8,000, then that tax would be $92 per each mill. In addition to the MNO amount that helps fund the county general fund, we have the fire millage rate, which in the case of the fire fund is the primary revenue source for that, unlike the general fund, where the fire services depend on this millage rate for virtually all of their revenue. And then the third one we have is the bond rate, which is used to pay the principal interest on the referendum, the voter-approved bonds that were used to supply park and transportation or road facilities. At the bottom of this page, you see that one mill, based on the taxable valuation this year, brings in just over, in gross amount of $12.7 million. We budget the 97% level, which is typically about the level that's collected, which is at the just over $12.3 million. The rest of that usually is collected in the following years with, you know, penalties and interest, but we budget for that separately. And here's a picture of the five years that put in the required newspaper ad each year. Just a quick note here, you can see toward the middle, the progression across this chart of the increase in the total net MNO digest from just over $9.5 billion back in 2015 to now over $12.7 billion. And then a graph pictorially showing the same progress over the five years of the total taxable valuation countywide. What we show in the next graph is just the MNO rate, again, used for the general fund, with the proposed rates that we'll discuss in a moment, the three different components. What you'll see is a proposed increase in the MNO rate, which brings that back to just short of where the rate was before it was cut three years ago, or what will be proposed you'll see is a 4.791 compared to before, back in 2015, it was 4.812. So that's just about brings it back up to where it was four years ago. And this is the page, I'll just spend a little bit of time in describing the three components and explaining what is happening here in the proposal. The top of the page, we have three different components that make up the county's total millage rate of 7.936. The bottom of the page, before I forget to mention, also on the tax bills, is the Board of Educations, MNO and bond rate, which in total constitutes more than 70% of the property tax bill. So we're, this Board of Commissioners has authority to levy the three rates at the top of the page. In total, what's being proposed is no increase to the 7.936 total county millage that was levied last year. But three different things are happening with these rates that I wanted to describe. First of all, we're recommending that the general obligation bond millage rate be reduced from 1.319 mills down to 0.970, and that will support the, again, the interest in principle on the county's outstanding general obligation bonds. In turn, due to needs to continue funding, first of all, for the fire district, which their 1.97 mill rate, I was trying to remember, I think that rate goes back to the last decade. I don't think there's been a change in that in a long time. Well, finally, with opening new fire stations, which can cost up to $1 million a year to staff and have the supplies and utilities to run them, the cost is finally catching up with this millage rate, even with increases in the tax digest each year. So the recommendation is to take 2%, I'm sorry, 2/10 of a mill, basically of this reduction from the bonds, and add that to the fire district rate, bringing that to 2.175. And the other part of the recommendation is to take the remaining 1.49 mills of the cut in the bond rate, add that to the MNO millage rate up there, again, to support the needs, and particularly the facility needs that are coming up in this case. So in total, the recommendation is to levy the same millage rate. Now, one important thing to recognize here is that, well, I didn't mention, back in the total valuation, the growth went up 8.37% in the tax digest. So since, and that goes up with two components, first of all, reassessment of, I should point out, reassessment of non-homesteaded properties makes up 4.26% of that increase, and then growth or new construction, new homes, new commercial development added to the tax digest is 4.11%. Because of that increase in the reassessments, even though this is the same total tax rate, we're still required to advertise, as we did, a notice of tax increase. It's considered a tax increase by the state for our advertising because it does generate more tax dollars. So we don't want to give the implication that just because the total tax rate is the same, that the county does not get more funding. It does, due to the higher assessments and, of course, through the new properties being added, the new developed properties being added to the tax digest. Now, for the homeowner, lastly, who has the homestead exemption, something actually happens here because they don't have the same exemption on the bond rate. The bond rate is going down on the, that component which is not protected by having a homestead exemption. That's important because if a property owner's assessment goes up, let's say $10,000, we have a floating exemption in this county. Their exemption goes up $10,000, so their net taxable value does not change due to their increased assessment. So that means that there is some protection on this fire rate and MNO rate because the taxable value, that does not go up. So we're moving part of this rate from the bonds that does not have a protection up to fire and MNO, which does. So depending on the actual valuation, there could be, it's only a few dollars, it's somewhat of a reduction due to this realignment of the three components. But again, I want to make sure I mention the value of the homestead exemption in protection for tax increases on the property owner. I'll come back to that slide and leave that open for a discussion in a moment, but here, again, we'd like to show pictorially that among the counties in the region around Atlanta, we show on the left of this slide the five counties we consider somewhat comparable to us, and then the other counties around the region, both smaller and larger, and we still are maintaining for MNO and fire, those primary services, we're still maintaining one of the lowest, if not the lowest, millage rate for county in this region. And with that, I'll leave it back on the page with the proposed rates, and that's the end of the presentation. For either board questions or proceed with the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open our public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, please vote. And it is now open with a vote of five to zero. If there is anyone who is here to speak, either in favor or not in favor, I guess at this point with our millage rates, please come forward at this time. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, please vote. We're now closed. Board, are there any, I know you had a public hearing earlier today on this item. Are there any existing, remaining questions that you might have for staff while we're gathered? Then at this point, we'll move on to our next item, and this will reappear again for another public hearing before we can adopt.
Unless Mary wants us to call her up here just because she was here this whole time.
Thank you. All right, and public hearing number 13 was postponed earlier this evening, which brings us to our second section of public comments. At this time, Karen is going to announce any speakers that we may have.
Madam Chair, we have no forms that have been submitted. If anyone would like to address the board, please come forward at this time. I see none.
Thank you, Karen. Moving on to old business, we had some additional postponements earlier this evening. Old business number one was postponed until August the 1st. The same with old business number two was also postponed to August 1st. We do have some new business before us this evening, item number one, Mr. Gerard. I believe that's the update on, well?
It is, Madam Chair.
We've got it on there twice. Why do we have it on there twice?
Todd added it. Todd added it under what was already there.
Well, it's a two-hour presentation, and I'm gonna give it twice.
Should we come, for the sake of redundancy or non-rendancy, should we combine items one and two at this time?
I wonder if there's any others besides this.
That is my motion to combine items one and two. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. Items one and two are now won.
Madam Chair, board members, this is, this is more informational than anything else, and I just want to make you aware of this and candidly wanted to do it on the record. This last legislative session, the General Assembly of the State of Georgia adopted a fairly significant piece of legislation, Senate Bill 66, the Streamlining Wireless Facilities and Antennas Act, and it's not being felt yet, but it's gonna be felt, and it will become effective in October 1st of 2019, and it will deal with an issue that you may recall this Board of Commissioners grappled with with respect to a form contract for use of our right-of-way for some time. So the notion is, is that the next sort of technological phase of wireless communications is on deck, and that would be the rollout of 5G. And the wireless industry is very interested in making use of local government right-of-way to be able to roll out 5G. They are moving away, at least in some respects, with respect to the monopole towers that you're used to, the balloon tests, the massive 150-foot towers. I'm not suggesting to you that those go away forever, but what I am suggesting to you, at least as I understand the technology, is that 5G and the way that is intended to be rolled out is gonna be by way of these small cells or small antennas that you need, they are smaller, they are less obtrusive, but you need more of them. And that's why our right-of-way became very attractive. So let me just go through this, and I'm gonna make it very short. This can actually be a lengthy presentation, but I'm not gonna put you through that. So the bottom line is this was, the reason for the act as articulated by the General Assembly was to prepare for the deployment of 5G, and it was to streamline that deployment by placement of broadband in the public right-of-way. The statute basically primarily focuses on two different types of locations. First of all, there is the colocation. Now, all of you probably think you know what that means, which is there's an existing tower or an existing structure, and they hang an antenna on something that's already there. That's colocation. It has a little bit more of a nuanced definition here because colocation also means that if there is a structure that's already in the right-of-way or that already exists, and it's right where they want it to be, but it's not, doesn't have the structural integrity, that they can in fact put up a replacement pole that is supposed to look a whole lot like the pole they took down, but it has the structural... like the pole they took down, but it has the structural integrity to hold up their antenna. That, too, is considered a co-location. So that's sort of one of the big things that they can do under this act is co-locate. And of course, there's a lot of emphasis on co-location because that's always where we have wanted them to camp out, and they can do that. But they also have the right to put new poles in right-of-way, poles that never existed in the right-of-way before. That's a little harder, but not much.
But they can't put up new billboards.
No, they can't put up new structures.
We dealt with that two years ago.
Right. They can't put up new, no, your point is, they can't put up new water towers or structures to put, no. This is only-
Well, they've been able to do a lot of things. I just want to double-check that.
Right. So the objective of the act is to allow wireless infrastructure providers and wireless service providers. So a wireless infrastructure provider, thank mobility, thank Crown Castle, they build the infrastructure, but they don't participate in broadband delivery services. Or wireless service providers, that's your Verizon, that's your AT&amp;T. So the bill deals with those two entities to enter your jurisdiction and either co-locate these facilities on existing poles or support structures. When you see support structures in the bill, thank buildings, thank water towers, thank billboards, thank anything that you can mount a small antenna on. They can do that. Or they can install new poles or new decorative poles. And when you think decorative poles, think of a very stylized pole that maybe you might see in a Savannah or a historic district, that's a really attractive pole. That's more of your decorative pole.
Do you believe that's that real?
Yeah, it's a thing. And there may be an area, just to give you an example, in downtown Savannah, where there's this very attractive, historic-looking pole, well, it's great, but it's not solid enough to hang a 5G antenna on. They'll come in, and the theory under the statute is, is they will put up a pole that looks almost exactly like that stylized pole, except it's got the physical capability to have embedded within it a 5G antenna.
But Ken, don't you think if they made such a big deal about going in our right-of-way, that they're not going to probably go way up out of our right-of-way on a billboard, say, that's way off?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, yes. But I mean, they can do that now. That's just a function of the lease with the private landowner or the private building. I mean, you can go down to Atlanta right now and see these things hanging off everything. I mean, hanging off parking structures, hanging on the sides of buildings, everywhere.
I mean, unless we're talking the city of Coming, where there's a billboard every, you know, 100 feet.
Right. All right. So I can put up a couple of slides just to give you a little bit of a visual depiction of what this could look like. So that's obviously on a municipal or a county light pole, all right? So that's supposed to be the five-cell, the small-cell structure on that. That's a definition of small wireless facilities. A bunch of city attorneys or county attorneys might want to read that. You probably don't. All right. There is a better depiction of what this looks like. So you can see, on the far-right picture, that is probably a replacement pole. There was probably a light pole there, and then it couldn't support the structure, and so they built a new one and literally integrated the 5G small-cell wireless antenna into the structure. And then, of course, you see the other examples where you see the, the middle one, you can see the antenna obviously juts out, looks to me like about eight to 10 feet above the structure, and that's a fairly common methodology for these. There are rates that we're going to be able to provide. The code defines what we can provide in terms of rates and fees. And the code does not, excuse me, when I say code, I mean statute. The statute does not require us to adopt an enabling resolution or ordinance. In other words, if we don't do anything, the statute becomes effective October 1st, whether we've adopted a resolution or ordinance or not. So that really, and so we, I will tell the board, we are working on an ordinance to take advantage of some of the, I'm not going to say loopholes, but some of the intricacies of the statute to make sure that the county gets all of the benefit out of the statute that we can. If agreed upon, the county and a wireless provider may charge higher rates or fees, but just remember, they can always backdrop against the rates and fees set in the statute. So their incentive to work out any sort of a deal over and above these rates and fees is very small, not much of an incentive. And any agreement that we enter into from now on with another wireless provider has to be made available to every wireless provider on the same terms and conditions. If an authority fails to adopt an ordinance or resolution, doesn't matter, as I mentioned, this becomes effective October 1st, whether we've adopted anything. The statute actually defines jurisdictions into three categories. Class-one authorities are those jurisdictions containing 100,000 parcels or more. Class-two, which is what Forsyth County is, is 10,000 to 100,000, and then class-three is 10,000 or less. You may wonder, why does the statute divide up into these various classes? The reason, there's two basic reasons for it. One of them has to do with batched or consolidated applications. The notion of the drafters was, you know, when this rollout occurs, it's going to be fast and furious, and please don't think for a moment this isn't focused on the metro jurisdictions, because it is, because they've got Clayton, DeKalb, City of Atlanta, right in their, right in their target zone.
That's for the people.
And so literally, when this thing becomes effective, those planning departments are going to be inundated with dozens, if not hundreds, of applications for these sites. And they are going to be batched, in fact, literally, there's going to be consolidated applications with like strings of these, of these small cells going down the street. And so this class, this batching of classes was a, sort of a pour, but is the best we could think of, way to identify jurisdictions that had the bandwidth to handle those batched applications. The notion was that a class-one authority probably has a fairly robust engineering and planning staff, and therefore could probably handle more batched applications than a smaller jurisdiction. And then you get into some of your more rural jurisdictions, they don't probably have a planning staff at all. And so it's going to be very burdensome for them. And so you can't do what are called population bills anymore. The General Assembly can't enact a bill and say, this bill only applies to populations of 100,000 or more. Constitution outlawed that. Well, we got creative and figured out a way to basically do what's effectively a backdoor population bill based on tax parcels, which is what that is. Pre-application meetings, in the Fultons, in the big jurisdictions, the wireless providers have to sit down with the planning staffs and the directors and basically tell them what the rollout looks like in order to sort of help those staffs beef up, maybe get some temporary help in. In our jurisdiction, since we're class-two, they have to do it if we ask them to. We're going to ask them to. That's going to be, that's going to be something that's going to be in the resolution or ordinance that you all adopt. Fees and rates, I'm going to speed up now. I understand, I have limited time, it's late. As a condition to the issuance of a permit to co-locate or replace a pole, there are rates they have to pay. So this is interesting. The rates apparently have to be assessed by the authority, which is interesting, because I've already told you, no resolution or ordinance had to be implemented to make the, and it's still going to become effective. So I think that's a little bit of a, some wonkish language in the statute, but let's assume that's the standard rate. So the application fee that we can charge is $100 per application for co-location, $2.50 for each replacement pole. Remember, that kind of sounds like a co-location, but they do get to take a pole out, throw it away, and put a new one in. And then for a brand-spanking new pole in an area that's never existed before, it's $1,000. Now, that's a fee. That's a one-time. That you all, Tom Brown knows all about fees. That's what those fees are. They're the one-time fee to have us process the application. All right? I'm going to keep going here. Rates, this is interesting. The rate that we can charge for the use of our right-of-way is $100 per year for each wireless facility co-located, and $200 for each new pole. If it's on our infrastructure, if it's on one of our pieces of infrastructure, we can charge an additional 40. So obviously, these are, these are very powerful rates for multi-billion dollars.
That was controlled by the FCC, not even elected.
Right. The rates will increase by 2.5% effective January 1st, 2021, so literally by 2030 or 2050, we'll be up to 40 bucks.
And they can still move their stuff out of our right-of-way whenever they damn well please.
Getting into permits and administrative review, I'm going to finally, I'm just going to, I think I'm going to wind up and just tell you that there is a fairly robust permitting scheme. I will also tell you, however, that the way this statute is drafted, that they basically tender an application, it's probably going to be to Mr. Brown's office, there will be the ability to consolidate and batch multiple applications. It sets shot clocks, and therefore, triggers start happening where we have certain number of days to tell them if the application is complete. They then have the ability to try and correct any deficiencies and get us a complete application. Once the application is complete, staff then have another set of days to give a thumbs-up or a thumbs-down on denial. If we do in fact deny an application, it can only be based on these fairly strict criteria set forth in the statute, and if we don't tell them in a timely fashion that it's denied, it's automatically deemed approved.
So how long will it take us to get one of those moved if we want to put a sidewalk through after they get one of those up?
They didn't address that shot clock, did they?
All right, all right. You can be that way about it. Hold on.
They will remove one in the same shot clock timeframe?
Right. All right, hold on. I want to try to find that, because I think we did. All right. Relocation, I did have a slide on this. Wireless providers must relocate poles at no cost to authorities when the poles and support structures unreasonably interfere with a widening, repair, reconstruction, or relocation of a public road or a public project. The wireless provider must relocate those structures by the date designated in a written notice with a minimum of 45 days' notice. Or, within the timeframe, the wireless provider estimates in good faith is reasonably necessary to complete the relocation, must provide the authority a good-faith estimate for relocation within 30 days of receiving in notice, explaining in detail why relocation cannot be accomplished within the timeframe set by the authority.
What does that mean, John Kennard?
Depends there in charge or not.
We'll do it when we please.
Board members, what I can tell you is, is that the wind was in their sails on this bill.
Always.
That there was a tough negotiation. I will tell you that the conventional wisdom is, is that this bill is one of the strongest of those jurisdictions that have adopted a bill of this kind. It's not perfect, and candidly, when we first sat down with them, you know, the, some of the jurisdictions, we're talking about a, you know, a $15,000 to $2,000 per year rate for them to be in the right-of-way. You saw what it turned out to be, $100, $2.50. So they had the wind in their sails. All I can tell you is, is that the team from ACCG and GMA did the best they could.
They fought hard.
They did. They did fight hard. So, Board members, I just wanted to put this on the public record. This is what's coming. We are going to be bringing you an ordinance to try to get the best out of this that we can, but we are going to be fairly limited by the statute.
Are we doing it early, as they're requesting?
Commissioner, we're not. We're going to try to do the best we can to get something in place by October.
That's it?
Cindy's ready to get the chainsaw on that last line.
So Tom, how excited are you about having this added in?
Sorry, I couldn't hear you.
How excited are you about having all of this added to your plate?
Well, I need to follow up on that. Up till now, I had assumed this was going to John's office. I've got my notes right here. Talk to Ken tomorrow.
I got you, all right.
Yeah, and that's fair. I mean, you know, that will probably be in the ordinance, and, you know, the statute doesn't say it has to be the planning director, doesn't say it has to be the director of engineering. And I think actually, probably Mr. Perkins needs to have this. And so we'll get it, that's just a joke.
Great idea.
We'll have to distract.
Water boy. So Ken, we can't do anything with any contracts or any agreements to move this forward faster until you get in the ordinance, or we have to wait until October 1st?
Well, the ordinance doesn't become, I mean, the statute doesn't become effective until October 1st. If the Board of Commissioners wants to allow providers to begin taking advantage of this statute before then, there's nothing to prevent you from doing that, but I would rather have the ordinance in place.
Well, here, we-
Yeah, that's true.
You put in place the process. Let me finish, let me finish, let me finish. I would like to see us start moving forward with our ordinance, and at the same time, start working with these providers. If we don't do it simultaneously, it'll be another year. I'd like to see this all come to fruition by October 1st.
It won't be another year, and let me, because I get your point, but I will say this, come October 1st, they can drop off an application, and somebody's office has 20-plus days to process it.
That's right. It's coming whether you want or not.
Can we start moving our ordinance forward so we can align with this at the same time?
Let me make a proposal, and to the extent we're talking about AT&amp;T here, which is the only person I've been engaging with, you know, the statute anticipates that if they have some poles and some cells that they want to roll out, why don't they go ahead and schedule a meeting with staff and show them the rollout? And the statute actually provides that the documentation they provide is not subject to the Open Records Act, because they understand that these guys are going to be giving some of their proprietary locations to us. But that would be, that would be a first step, is let them bring their plan to our staff to begin to assess it.
But do we, if you want to put this in ordinance, and our ordinance takes two months by the time we bring it.
It can be a resolution.
It's just a resolution?
It says ordinance or resolution.
Well, let's, I'd like to see it aligned. I mean, it just makes sense if we get this done and have it all aligned at the same time.
I think that's what we're planning here.
And when, but when Paul came in and met with me, and I sent out an email, I think to you and to Tom, didn't Tom, or maybe it was to Tim Merritt, and didn't y'all offer for Paul to come in and meet with y'all and to talk about what it would look like? And I seem to think somebody sent an email back, and anyway, I didn't, I never heard if Paul replied to that. Anyway.
Well, we have more to come on this subject. Is there any lingering questions for this evening on it? Because I've got a real important question for counsel.
Tim, have, did Paul, I mean, have you heard from Paul Chambers?
I have not heard from Paul in months. I've seen him and just briefly spoken to him, but as far as discussing this, I have not in months.
But there's no reason.
Because this is coming.
Yeah. Right. Commissioners, I mean, I've heard from Paul, and what I pointed out to him, I think about the time that the legislature was winding down, was that the board had already put in place a process. But AT&amp;T and others went to the General Assembly because they chose to circumvent your process and have the state override local governments. So as I told him, you had already put in place a process, they choose not to cooperate with us to circumvent us, and I think, you know, what we certainly can do, and back to Commissioner Leventz's comment, we can certainly put in place a process as quickly as possible to comply with what the state has set up, and to the extent that you want to roll that out before October 1, you know, we'll figure out how to do that. But they circumvented us, and then they'd like us to early implement the state law, because I think they were surprised that it wasn't going to take effect until October 1. And for us, I think it's fortunate that this legislature gave us some time to figure this out.
Well, when Paul came in and met with me, he said, what can I do for you? And I said, what about moving that infrastructure for, we could get those sidewalks done on Trammell Road, because we've got a big lawsuit coming up because you wouldn't move those. He said, I don't know what you're talking about. I said, hang on, I'll call Quinn Martin and see, because I think I can find out real quick what you're talking about. And I got Quinn Martin on the phone, and he said, well, we have in fact laid it over to the side because they would never move it.
Where's that son of a girl?
Eric? I can have it here within moments.
Yeah.
Comcast, too, but they're not the villain today.
All right.
Well, I have a real important question for counsel at this point, and it's, do we have a need for executive session?
Madam Chair, we do not.
Get out. Is there a motion, then, to recess the regular meeting, public hearings, and actually to adjourn?
Second.
The motion is second, please vote. The motion is second, please vote. Commissioner Cooper, are you ready to go? Hit your button, assistant.
Vote, vote, vote.
We are adjourned at 7:51 with a 5-0 vote.